Okay, can everybody hear me? All right. So I'd like to call the meeting the order. Let's stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands by law, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you want to do the roll call?
Mr. Lyman?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Girardi?
Here.
Mr. Hansel?
Here.
Mr. Sayad?
Here.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm here as well.
Chris?
Chris White.
From school.
It's all right.
Raise your hand, please. From the school board, you've got to raise your hand.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, so anyone who plans to give testimony today or would like to come up in speech, if you could please rise and raise your right hand, please, be sworn.
Do you swear on the testifying trial? Please do so.
David.
Please state your name for record prior to your conference speech.
Yeah, name and address. Okay. Do we have any thing for public comment? Anything that's not on the agenda? Is there someone here to speak on public comment? I see no one.
Could I be heard, please?
Pardon me?
Could I be heard?
Absolutely.
These items were advertised. Item PC two, registered by six, one, two, eighteen, in the Tampa Bay Times. PC eleven is advertised with the address of Davison Valley. P thirteen, P fourteen, registered in Tampa Bay Times, September twenty eighth, two thousand and eighteen. All other items were advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on eleven, two, eighteen.
Thank you. Okay, so for those of you who haven't been here before or not on a regular basis, just explain how we operate. We're the Planning Commission. We're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. We meet twice a month. The Planning Commission serves as a local planning agency. The Planning Commission holds public hearings and transmits to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important that you attend the appropriate Board of County Commissioner meeting, and we have those dates available for you. So... I think we need approval of minutes. Have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Ms. Corlin.
Good afternoon, Corlin Howell, current planning. The first item is PC one. It's a conditional use request for a continuance. Carol A. Roth, operation of a power glide launch and landing field in an AC agricultural district in central Pasco County at the southeast corner of the intersection of McHenry Road and Tyndale Road. There's a continuance requested to the December thirteenth Planning Commission meeting at one thirty in Dade City.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the continuance?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second is PC two, a conditional use continuance for Patricia Weber, Fezmer, North American Towers, EarthCom Services, Inc., for a hundred and ninety-five foot above-ground level monopole wireless communications facility in the AC district. It's located approximately 1,000 feet south of State Road fifty-two and 1,000 feet east of Bellamy Brothers Boulevard, containing a proposed 10,000-square-foot fenced compound. Your packet is requesting a continuance to December thirteenth, but there was an email from Denise requesting a continuance to January tenth, 2019, at one thirty in Dade City.
Okay, so staff's requesting a continuance to one, January nineteenth?
Yes.
In Dade City?
Yes.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to talk to that or object? Okay, I see no one. I hear a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
PC three is a conditional use request, a continuance, Jasmine Center Ballpark Auctions, LLC, an indoor auction house in a C two general commercial district west central Pasco County on the west side of US Highway nineteen and the south side of Jasmine Boulevard. A continuance is requested to November twenty-ninth Planning Commission meeting at one thirty in Newport Ritchie.
All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to speak? I see no one. I hear a motion.
Moved to continue to November twenty-ninth at one thirty.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
PC four is a special exception on the consent agenda with a Lakouchi River Electric Co-op Storage and Repair Facility for Essential Services and AR one agricultural residential district northeast Pasco on the west side of US ninety-eight, approximately seventeen hundred feet north of the intersection of ninety-eight and three oh one. It's containing 4.67 acres, and that's on consent.
Okay, we'll just go through the consent and anything that needs to be pulled. I think I mentioned this to you originally, but if we go through the consent agenda and you have something that you hear that you want to talk about today, raise your hand and we'll pull it from the consent agenda. Otherwise, it'll stay on consent and we'll vote on it one time.
PC five is a zoning amendment on consent. Schwend Family Limited Partnership, change in zoning from AC agricultural district to PO one professional office, located approximately 650 feet north of Johnston Road and approximately 650 feet east of Hammond Road.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm fine with this one staying on consent, but just by way of disclosure to the Planning Commission, I've discussed with staff and the applicant that we need either a deed restriction or a development agreement associated with this one to ensure that the PO one uses that are allowed are consistent with the comp plan. I believe the applicant's in agreement with that, and we'll be doing that between now and the board meeting.
Okay, is the applicant here?
I'm here. And I have no objection.
You're agreeable?
Yes.
Okay, and that's Clyde Hobby?
Clark.
Clark Hobby, I mean, yeah. Yeah, you look a little bit like him.
That is my first time as your chair.
Not the worst thing I could have said.
Space man.
Yeah, right.
PC six is a zoning amendment consent.
I'm sorry, did you ask about public comment on that one?
Yeah, I think I did. Was there any public comment? I don't think there was. Yeah, I think I asked.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Stetson Property Florida Elite Fence Company, change in zoning from a C two general commercial district and an R one MH single-family mobile home district to a C two general commercial district. It's located on the west side of US Highway nineteen and the north side of Flounder Drive.
All right, applicant present?
Yeah.
Okay, anyone here to comment? I don't see anyone.
PC seven is a zoning amendment consent. Justin Marchicano Trust, change in zoning from R two low-density residential district to C two general commercial district, located on the east side of Land O' Lakes Boulevard, approximately 1,100 feet south of State Road fifty-four. And I handed out to the clerk and to you a letter of no objection for that rezoning for the record.
Okay.
Just for clarification, that's south of state or fifty-two, right, not fifty-four?
Did I say fifty-two?
It says fifty-four. It's supposed to be fifty-two, I believe.
Ah, okay. We'll be sure that's changed.
Okay. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Okay, no objection, right. Anybody here to speak? Nobody to speak. All right.
PC eight is a zoning amendment on consent, Newport Ritchie Automotive Management, LLC, and Jacob Cross Holdings, LLC. Change in zoning from R four high-density residential district, C two general commercial district, and an MPUD master plan unit development to an MF one multi-family medium-density. It's located on the northwest side of Gulf Trace Boulevard, approximately 200 feet north of Camry, and it contains 12.27 acres.
All right, is applicant present? Anyone here to speak? I see no one.
PC nine is with a Lakouchi River Electric Co-op, change in zoning from an R three medium-density residential to an AR one agricultural residential district. It's located on the west side of US Highway nineteen, excuse me, ninety-eight, approximately 1,700 feet north of the intersection of US ninety-eight and US Highway three oh one, extended westerly to Old Trilby Road.
Okay, and the applicant? All right, anyone here to speak? I see no one.
PC ten, conditional use request, consent, VGA Realty, LLC, Nail Country and Tan Spa, sale of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine only, on premises consumption in conjunction with the operation of the Nail and Tan Spa in an MPUD district. At the south, it's located at the southeast corner of Bruce B. Downs Boulevard and Williamsburg Drive.
And is the applicant present? Anyone here to speak?
Corlin, just one thing for clarification, and it may just be the terminology and all that it matters, but under finding a fact one, it says a business owner proposes to serve complimentary drinks to salon patrons. Does that mean like they're free, or does that mean like to complement their services?
The planner for that is, I don't know, because I don't have it here in front of me, so maybe somebody can answer your question. I can't. I didn't handle it.
Can the owner, maybe the applicant can speak to that? Could you come forward, please, and maybe answer that question for us?
David, maybe that doesn't matter, because under finding a fact, I was just for clarification, otherwise I don't know why I'm here.
Well, let's go ahead and clarify.
Yeah, let's go to the microphone.
Yeah, if you'd come on up and state your name, please, and address?
My name is Huihun. I'm the owner of Nail Country and Tan Spa.
Uh-huh.
Our main purpose was to serve wine and beer for our customer on pretty much on
Are they free?
Yes.
Are you charging for them?
Yes.
Are they free?
They are free, yes.
And what was your address? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Your address?
The address will be 1700 Bruce B. Downs Boulevard, Wesley Chapel, Florida.
Okay. Did you stand when they asked people to be sworn? Did you stand and get me sworn?
I'm sorry, I did not.
Let's do it again, just in case.
Do you swear all that the testimony about to give to these people, God?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good. Can I answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, this is a conditional use for the sale of alcoholic beverages, correct? I mean, does he?
Yeah, I'm not sure you need one to give away alcohol.
Right.
Just, is there anybody in staff can advise us as to why they're going through the conditional use process? I know it's not Corlin. Says the lead planner is Kyle Rowat. Is Kyle here?
We can follow up and then get you an answer.
Regardless, I don't think there's any problem with recommending approval to the board. If for some reason it's not needed, they can just withdraw it.
Okay.
So, but there's no harm in recommending it, because even if you wanted to sell it, it sounds like you'd recommend approval anyway, so.
Okay.
All right.
Now I can sell.
You got a better deal.
PC eleven is a commercial development consent, Cypress Creek Middle School District School Board of Pasco County, a request for approval of a preliminary construction site plan and stormwater management plan and report for 1,188,936 square-foot middle school on approximately 32.33 acres, located in central Pasco County on the west side of Old Pasco Road, approximately 4,200 feet north of Overpass Road.
Okay, is anyone here to speak for the applicant?
Maybe I will.
I was looking your way.
I thought somebody else.
You have anything to say on that, or is that everything okay, we're here?
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there anybody else to speak to that one? I see no one.
That'll do it for the consent items.
Approval to consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve consent agenda items. One was amended, and do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Who's got this special exception?
So for any of you who had, were on consent agenda, yours has been approved. You're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to hug out. See you, Clark.
See you, Clyde.
See you, Clyde.
Space man.
Yeah, spaceman. Inside joke.
If you can. That'd be great. Thank you. Twelve.
She's on a hunting trip.
Good afternoon, Amy Hyler with Planning and Development. The matter you're hearing on right now is special exception SE 7366 in the name of Ronaldo Orezzi Fernandez. The subject property is located in the south central, of south central Pasco County, on the north side of Leona Lane, approximately 100 feet east of Bonnie Blue Drive. The special exception is requesting a home occupation for dog grooming in an AR agricultural residential district. The reason why you are hearing this is because on June fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the applicant was issued a code violation for this matter for operating a dog business within an AR district. Access to the site is from Leona Lane, a 25-foot privately maintained lime rock roadway, subject to an ingress egress access easement recorded in OR book eight thousand and three, page sixty-five. And your surrounding zoning is characterized by residential uses, and your surrounding land use is also characterized by residential with a future land use of RES three, residential three dwelling units per gross acre. This is a site plan showing where the dog grooming is taking place, which is in her shed in the back of her property. And this is a visual of access coming from Bonnie Blue Drive to Leona, to Leona Lane. Leona Lane coming in through the cul-de-sac to her drop-off area, which is where she essentially drops off, her customers drop off the dog. She picks up the dog, takes it back into the shed, grooms, and it's basically just the local community that is doing this. Her operation is two dogs, no more than two dogs or two customers per day after the hours of 3:00 PM, so it's not that many. And they just drop off at the cul-de-sac. She picks them up, takes them to the shed, and they usually come back within about 10 to 15 minutes. So with that being said, we approve the special exception with conditions pursuant to LDC Section 530.21 of a home occupation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here.
All right, are there any questions from here? And is the applicant present? Somewhere? Okay. Thank you. Anyone here to object? Okay, I see no objections. I hear a motion.
Well, before you do, did the applicants want to say anything? I mean, it didn't sound like you need to, but did you want to say something? Okay.
All right, I hear a motion.
We approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Ernie Monaco, Long Range Planning, Planning and Development. I need to go make sure that we have the right one. Yes, I want mine, yes, the newer one. Before we begin, I'd like to actually request that the clerk be able to receive and file the ex parte communications between individual commissioners and stakeholders.
Okay, does that include the emails?
Yes, everything recently, most about 20 minutes ago.
So anything that was forwarded to Denise, you have?
I have right here, yes.
Okay.
Print it out. One sec.
Any, do I have a motion to receive?
Motion approved.
Receive and file? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd also like to request, we have updated the agenda memo and the order because in the recent week, the applicant has met with a neighbor group to resolve an issue, and we wanted to put it in the latest version of that, so could I please allow, pass this out?
Sure. You're gonna file it with us? Yeah, is that the same thing you just gave her?
This is different.
Okay, so we have a motion.
These revised agenda items.
So do we need a motion to receive?
If you want, does it hurt?
Yeah, so a motion to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The subject today, whoops, I went back to where it was. Yes, PDD eighteen SE 7343, a special exception from Duke Energy Florida. You have seen these slides at least twice before, so what I'd like to do is just quickly summarize to refresh your memory and then focus on the new change, which is a condition of approval. I'm sorry. So an electrical substation is an expansion on an agricultural district zone parcel, and is adjacent to the property that they already have. You can see on the map right there, South Market area off fifty-four. Let me get you a better map, coming up. Right there is the site. Access to the site is from Satin Leaf Lane. It's a substandard dirt road, private, and additional access will be from the existing substation on Smith Road, which is a county-maintained dirt road, but it's county-owned operated. And you can see in red is the expansion site. Directly to the right is actually the existing facilities. Okay, the parcel's own, the AC agricultural district. They had to readvertise, I think we went through this before, we don't need all that. Here's what's important, at least to quickly refresh our memories. There were revisions from the last meeting, and I'm gonna show you on a map. The first one is a 10-foot wide curvy-liner planting bed was added along the southern edge, adjacent to the new driveway next to the detention pond. So if you want to see the map right there, right there on the bottom left, new 10-foot curvy-liner planting, right there. Whoops.
Somebody fall down?
Okay. The second thing, existing tree canopy, tree main post-construction is clearly noted, and you'll see the canopy right there on the upper left side, existing tree canopy noted on the plans. Okay, let me go back again. And third is identified a minimum 45-foot setback at the narrowest point along the southern edge of the expansion. So these are the conditions of approval as of two weeks ago. Let me go back and go next. And you can see that right there, on the right side, lower 45-foot minimum structure setback. And then the expansion is, the little common is about 7% of the parcel. Subject site is about 10.12 acres, more or less. I'm gonna just talk to you about the revisions in the last week that we have made, and access to the subject site is from Satin Leaf Lane. It's a 25-foot right-of-way. It's a substandard private road, and additional access will be available from Smith Road, a 100-foot right-of-way, but it's also substandard county-maintained road as defined in Section 901.4 of the LBC. The additional condition of approval is this one. I'll read it into the record. "The owner applicant agrees to improve and pave the unpaved portion of Smith Road, starting at the portion of Smith Road which is currently located south of Mandolin Cave Avenue, and continue to and including the unpaid portion of Satin Leaf Lane, terminating at the applicant's western property boundary on Satin Leaf Lane. Such paving shall be completed within six months of completion of the applicant's construction of the substation expansion, but no later than June 30th, 2020. The paving of Satin Leaf Lane is subject to and conditioned upon the applicant obtaining approval of the Satin Leaf Lane Owners Association pursuant to the rules and requirements provided for in the Declaration of Covenants, conditions, restrictions, and easements for Satin Leaf Lane, which was recorded on August 15th, 2014, in the Official Records Book 9073, page 1353 of the Public Records of Pasco County. If said portions of Smith Road are Pasco County-owned right-of-way at the time applicant commences the road improvements, the applicant shall improve Smith Road to the applicable Pasco County standards. However, if said portions of Smith Road are no longer owned by Pasco County but have been either vacated or otherwise conveyed to private ownership, then the road improvements shall conform to the standards approved by the applicable owners of Smith Road." So we are recommending, let me actually read the title again so we know this is a special exception, Duke Energy Florida, a special exception for an electrical substation expansion in an AC agricultural district, south central Pasco County, on the north side of Satin Leaf Lane, approximately 650 feet west of Smith Road, containing approximately 10.12 acres. The recommended Planning Commission action is to approve the special exception request as set forth under the recommended conditions, which we have talked about, the most recent ones, and I'm going to, I'm gonna think we need to turn it over to the applicant who actually is going to address the latest developments. Okay?
Okay, thank you. You come up and state your name and address, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Andrew Gilmore with Duke Energy, 3300 Exchange Place, Lake Mary, 32746. I'm in the Siding, Permitting, and Engagement Division for Duke Energy. Good afternoon. If we could just switch over, we had a very brief presentation.
Mr. Gilmore, before you get into your presentation, are you in agreement with the changes to the agenda memo and the additional condition that Mr. Monaco just read?
We are.
Okay.
If we could.
Somebody getting your presentation up there? Somebody getting your presentation up there?
Is, is, do you have one too? Wow.
It's only a handful.
It's a motion picture, actually.
Flip the papers.
No, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, let me, sorry, this is the presentation.
Okay, make a motion. Do we hear a motion?
Second.
Home favor? Posed. Motion carries. Sure. Just give her a copy, please.
Thank you.
All right, so I think we're good to go here. So just a real quick overview, I think you folks had seen this at our last hearing. This is an expansion to our existing substation that was approved in 2003. At that time, in the county findings of fact, these facts here were established that this, among other things, this, our existing substation feeds with La Clutchy River's distribution substation. Also of note, of course, for us, at the time that this was approved, back then, our company, at that time it was Florida Power, but had indicated that we would be looking at future expansion. It was always planned to be designed for a future expansion. At that time, we had predicted six to 10 years. Some things had happened with the economy, and growth had slowed, but now we are back with the plant expansion of the substation that we had forecasted at the time that the original substation was built.
So let me ask you this, if I may, Mr. Jones. Wouldn't that apply to, to the first piece of property that you're talking about? Really wouldn't have anything to do with this new piece of property you've acquired?
Well, I think, you know, being 15 years ago, we wouldn't have known what the expansion would look like at the time. We knew we had to expand it, but we did not have plans, specific plans at the time of what that would look like, because that's not designed later until we get actual, you know, load growth statistics and then match that with future load growth predictions, and that really dictates what capacity needs to be added. We knew that Pasco County would continue to grow, all indications were there, but at the time, we, we wouldn't have known what the expansion would look like or how much land it would take on.
So just to be clear, was this land you already owned or you just acquired?
So if you look at the image up here, the original special exception permit was for this parcel here, roughly the same size, a little over 10 acres. This outline here shows the footprint of our existing substation. This outline here shows our proposed expansion. This is the, this parcel we recently purchased this year, this is the subject parcel before you today. Our expansion into that new parcel is approximately 1.27 acres. And so it's this small piece here that triggered the requirement for a special exception permit for this subject parcel here.
All right, thank you.
This is just an area, you've seen very similar ones, but as we begin to talk about the different neighborhoods, I just wanted to make sure, for the folks that may not be familiar with the area, this is, if I can get this to work, this is State Route 54. The county road, Smith Road, comes down here around this bend, and for all intents and purposes stops here. This is no longer a passable road. I don't know if it's been legally discontinued or not, but this is no longer passable. So for the purposes of this discussion, the county road, Smith Road, really comes down, stops here, and from this point west, this is the private Satin Leaf Lane, this section here. And as you heard earlier, we've agreed to pave, the county pavement stops essentially right there, and we've agreed to pave all the way down over to the western edge of our new parcel. What you see here is our, again, our existing substation here. This is the proposed expansion here to the west. The neighborhood right around the substation is Satin Leaf. These are the Satin Leaf owners here. This neighborhood directly to the south is the Province at Meadow Point. These are two distinct neighborhoods, so there's no passage in between, they have their own entrances. So the primary, really only entrance into Satin Leaf is from County, Smith Road into Satin Leaf Lane, and then the entrance to the Meadow Point neighborhood is here off of Meadow Point Boulevard. So what has happened since our last hearing? At the last hearing, there was discussion, there was not a lot of discussion, I think, on the landscape plan itself, except for one section here, where it was pointed out there was a gap, and why do we have a perimeter here? There was an easement that looked like a former drainage easement. We had to do some more research on that to figure out what we could and could not do, which we have done. So what you'll see here, as Mr. Monaco had pointed out, was we modified the landscape plan here. So that one section is the only modification before you today that's new from the enhanced landscape plan that you saw before. The other, one other point that the Meadow Point, Province at Meadow Point neighbors had mentioned or requested was a vantage point, a photo simulation, if you will, which I do have copies here if you don't, if you haven't seen that yet, which we have created for them and had given that to their attorneys, and we had submitted it as well. If it's all right, I can pass these out if you're interested in seeing those.
Same motion?
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The clerk asks who's seconded the motion? Which one of you seconded the motion?
Pete, you made it.
I did. I thought somebody down there.
Pete.
Okay.
I think Mike made the motion.
Another area that received a lot of attention as well are, or was, what has been the communication flow, if you will, and I know certainly there were a number of folks who had felt that, you know, Duke was not being very communicative, and so we've really tried to demonstrate that, in our view, we didn't feel that was the case, but we recognize if people had felt that way, that we needed to do more. So in your packets, I believe, we put together the communications log really from the beginning of when we began to talk to neighbors about this proposed expansion. I think for the Satin Leaf neighborhood, I'll just go back so we can refer to the map again. We most recently met in person with several owners in this neighborhood. One of the things that you folks asked for clarity on was where we stood with the road, were we gonna pave it or not, and how did the neighbors feel? So we, we've agreed to that condition. There are, I think, owners from this neighborhood here today, so I don't want to speak on their behalf, but what we heard them say as well is that they were interested in having this paved. Security is a concern, and so we're working with them as well, and that's why I believe the condition language before you has several different possibilities, whether it's private or public, and we'll continue to work with them. We, again, have discussed that issue as well with county staff, and so we believe we've reached agreement with the closest neighbors on the condition of the road and agreed to that condition. As far as that, I am not aware of any other outstanding issues that we've not addressed. If anything new comes up today, we, we can certainly address that with the Satin Leaf neighborhood. In the Province at Meadow Point neighborhood, we met with 12 or 15 neighbors and their attorney back on Monday, October 29th. A lot of the discussion had to do with, again, the westward expansion and why can we not, or why will we not move north? And I can give you the highlights of that again, and I'm happy to answer any questions for you, but the discussion at the last hearing really centered around cost, which was disheartening to me, because cost is not a driver of the decision to move west or move north. In fact, we've got, you know, a quarter million dollars in enhanced landscaping, way far in above what we normally do for something like this. If it, if it were just a matter of cost, I don't think we'd be here. What we cannot do, if you see this expansion, while we're only moving into the new subject parcel, approximately 1.27 acres, this expansion is much larger than just the 1.27 acres. It comes from our existing sub and moves west here. There's not enough room to move north if we could do it, and we can't for several reasons. I think we explained last time, this is a 230-yard, we have to tie into the 115, which is on the southern part of the existing substation. Again, it won't fit, but if we could move it north, we would have to cross over this northern yard here, the 69, to tie in here. There's an existing 69 KV line that already comes down here and feeds with La Clutchy's distribution sub. We have another existing 115 line that comes this way, and we have an existing 69 KV that already comes down here. So if it were possible to move it north, we would have multiple line crossings, and we would be tying in a new yard up here with the southern yard and having to cross what's already there. For us, that design is significantly inferior for a number of reasons. Safety is a huge one. We would have multiple line and equipment crossings that we don't design into substation designs. If you can imagine having different voltage lines and trying to do work, we can't work over an energized line, we have to have minimum safety clearances. In addition to the safety, which is our primary concern always with our alignment and our folks, would be the reliability of the design itself. You, you, if you have an alternative, you never design line crossings of transmission lines. Again, if we have to work on the upper line, you have to take both of them out, you can't work over an energized line. So there's reliability concerns, and the safety concerns are extraordinary, and perhaps we didn't underpin that enough when we had spoken earlier, but this, these are reasons why it's just not feasible for us to move north. Other considerations, those are the two primary. So safety is our absolute top concern. Second to that is the reliability of the overall grid and the system, that, that, that wouldn't, design would not work to maintain a reliable infrastructure here. In addition to that, there's been some talk, this wetland up here is a higher value than the wetland to the west. We would obviously be impacting it at a far greater rate than the current impacts to the west. And lastly, we don't own this land up here, we own this land as well. But again, if I can leave you with anything, the two primary reasons this doesn't work for us to move north is the safety issue, and then the electrical tie issue and the reliability of the overall design. We would not design a substation like that. So we discussed that at length with the owners in Meadow Point. We discussed the modification to the landscape plan, again, adding that portion on the southern borders. We did also talk to them conceptually about the transmission lines as well, there was a lot of, there were a lot of questions about that at the last hearing, and we showed them just conceptual, because we do not have final engineering. But we know we have, this is an existing corridor right here, we would have to be tying into this existing corridor. And so we are not talking about, you know, new transmission lines, you know, coming in from the east or west, or having, you know, far greater impacts.
Let me just query you, did you give us a submitted request for extra time, written request?
I can't remember how much we ran it out.
I'm trying to give you the adequate time to explain it to everybody, but also we have certain rules and regulations we want to try to follow, otherwise everybody would be speaking for an hour.
Well, and I can wrap this up fairly quickly, too. Where, where am I on the clock?
Well, I don't know, they're keeping it over there.
Gotcha.
So where do we stand on the clock there? Anybody know? Okay. So anyway, go ahead and wrap it up and...
All right, I'll wrap it up. I'll commit to not going over five minutes.
I'm sure you'll have questions that you'll have to come up and react to.
Sounds good. So again, we met with the Meadow Point owners on the 29th. Since that time, candidly, we've not had a lot of communication, because we've not heard from them. We just learned the other day that they're not represented by the attorneys that we were in communication with. So I, I can't tell you, you know, today that we were able to reach agreement with them. We did talk about, again, the possibilities of some enhanced landscaping, but around the substation site itself, it's, it's a pretty robust landscaping plan already. I don't think there's much more we could do there that would have an added value for them, if you will. So if I can just move forward real quickly here. Already covered those, we covered here. Again, I just want to point out, over here, these are the minimum code requirements for screening and buffering that are part of the county code. Our initial landscape screening and buffer plan over here had met or exceeded in every category, and then, of course, we've since have enhanced it after all the communications with the neighbors and with you folks. In some cases, we're more than three times what the minimum requirements are. And you're familiar with these, we went over them, if not both previous hearings, certainly the last one, but the special exception permit, again, on the subject parcel, is subject to the six criteria that you folks have laid out. We have met each of the six requirements for the special exception permit. And so where we are right now is, you know, hoping you folks will approve the permit today. We have brought forth a proposal we feel really limits the area of the substation expansion. We've screened as much as we believe is practical to do. The, if the special exception is approved today, this will move into site plan approval, of course, and there'll be a lot more detail and a lot more documentation and preparation, if you will. Again, just to refresh your memory, our construction of the site is anticipated to begin January of 2020, so no construction next year, and end that same year, November 2020. And I would, again, leave you with a request that you folks approve the special exception permit based on meeting or exceeding those six criteria.
All right, thank you, we appreciate that. We're gonna see who's here now that has, may have questions or comments, and then, if appropriate, we can come back up and respond.
Thank you.
Okay, for those who would like to come up and speak, that have been sworn, you may begin. Please come up and state your name and address, what your concerns are, and what we'd like to do is not repeat the same concerns every time somebody comes up. So try to bring something new.
Yes, sir. Ethan Lillerbridge.
You have roughly three minutes.
Yes, sir. Ethan Lillerbridge, 30977 Satin Leaf Lane. You know, Duke brought up the concerns that we have agreed to them to pave the road, and there are security issues. I'd just like to go on the record that what they have agreed to is to provide a gated access, because we're worried about the traffic once this road is paved. The other big concern that I have is understood that they've said they're gonna grow. The last I've been told, they don't plan on growing anymore for 25 more years. In the last 25 years, this will now make the third substation adjacent to my property. I don't, I don't want the landscaping plan they provided. I don't like the landscaping plan they provide. I prefer that they fence right up to their construction and either lease the land to us, donate the land to our neighborhood as a park, but I don't want them to have 20 acres when all they're required to have is 10. So if they can't do it on the 10 they need, and they had to buy more, cut them back to 10. And that's all I got.
All right, thank you very much. And who would like to be next?
I've got a presentation that I...
I've got a presentation that I had given to you up there.
Okay. Did you request extra time?
Yes, I did.
Okay. How much time did you request?
About 15 minutes.
Okay. We got a timer?
Yes, that's me. I'm Len Vanderholt. I live at 30990 Calmont Terrace in the province neighborhood that's south of the development here. As you heard, we no longer have legal representation. The funds that we initially put forth to that, we've exceeded that by double right now, and that was even before we've gotten to this point. So we basically had to go on our own with this. The special exception that they're looking for will have an impact on our property values. They say that they won't see it from the neighborhood, but it will be seen. It will require moving significant amount of trees, and I'll show you pictures of those as we go through. And certainly, the transmission lines that they didn't talk about will certainly have an impact on our property values, the views, and everything that we see currently from our neighborhood. So the area in red that they have in there, that's the proposed area that they plan on going into right now. If you could go to the next slide, or do I have a remote for that here?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Thanks.
You really messed it up now.
Now I'm on my, now I'm on my, okay. This is one of the pictures that they provided. It's a view from the end of the cul-de-sac, looking towards where the proposed substation would go. If I was gonna hide the substation behind a house, that's probably the place I would take the picture from. The house is, sorry, not used to this type. That red square is that house, nicely in line with where they projected the substation would go. So you really have to look at sort of the before and afters to really see what the effect is there. That particular house, our neighbors Louis and Danielle moved into that. I talked to him on Sunday. He wasn't able to be here today. He bought that property because of where it was, adjacent to an open field on one side and a pond view on the other side. So his backyard's gonna have a wonderful view of the power substation when this is all done. This is the view that they had just provided with from our entrance. Again, you know, it does show, you know, a nice tree line that's there, but as they talked about paving a road and putting a road in there, a significant number of those trees are gonna be removed, and that view will not look like that view anymore. And again, it's, you know, kind of a little bit of a, an angle that shows this in its best light. Just on the other side of where this shows, and so they're looking at this view right here. This slide shows just on the other side of the gate. Nice view across an open pond, trees across there. That's what we look at when we take the dog for a walk. That's what we see virtually every day as we pass by there. It's certainly less obstructed than most of the views that we have there. Once they put the power station in, they widen the road and everything else, you know, maybe not as fancy as they are, but that's kind of what our view will be looking like. Regardless of how many trees they need to put in to cover up the front of it, they're still gonna have to take a lot of trees out to put a road in there.
How wide is that road?
I'll get to that in just a second. And that, as I said in there, that's even before transmission lines go in there.
Sir, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What you're saying isn't making sense to me in part. I understand why they'd have to take down trees maybe for their power lines, but the road that they have to pave is all, they're just paving within the existing dirt right away.
Yeah. I'll show you a picture of that.
So I don't think that, it's obvious to me why they'd have to take out trees to pave that road.
Okay. Can you just bear with me for a minute? I'll get to the slide that has that on there. There is alternatives. You know, they said they couldn't move to the north. It wouldn't fit. That's the same size square moved up to the north there. It will fit. They talked about the wetlands being different. I've taken a look up through there. Usually, wetlands usually are wet. That wetlands to the north is pretty dry, not much in the way of water in there. I talked to our neighbor to the north there, Ori. He said it might get wet when we have a lot of rain, but that's about it. The wetlands to the west are actually even wetter. Let's see. They talked about understanding how much time, or how much expansion they would have. When I spoke to Andrew, is it? Yeah. At Eric's house, he told me if this was kind of a green field, they would be able to fit the 230 volt substation, the 110, 115,000 volt lines in there, and the 69, all in the footprint that they currently have right now. And now they want to expand again. Although they said the permitting for this came in 2003, the actual construction didn't go in place until sometime in 2008, just 10 years ago. In various orientations that will fit in there, whether they share land with Lakuchie, trade with the neighbors. They talked about if we went north, it would affect the neighbors in Ashley Pines. It does go no further north than the Lakuchie substation now, so it could fit in there. It's not that it's impossible. They said it's just hard and expensive. There's either other options. They could move further east. There's open land there. There's open land there. There is a line that currently goes through there, and that's what we see today. If they get the substation to go where they want it to go now, they're gonna put lines right where we will see them. They're not gonna run down the same corridor. They showed us conceptual drawings of where they might go, but they will go right through our neighborhood. The poles that they will be using are at least 20 feet higher than what we currently have, so they'll double them up. We'll double up the lines and double up the poles. And that will certainly have a negative impact on our property values. They say they don't know where the lines are gonna go yet. Those markings there are stakes in the, in the ground right here where those power lines conceptually might go. The trees that are marked here are trees that they plan on taking down. You asked about the road width? That's looking south down Smith Road now. It's, the road's roughly about 20 feet wide. It's maintained by the county. The road that they want to pave is 11 feet wide with trees on both sides of the road. It's fairly narrow. Those trees would probably have to be taken out, not only to accommodate the road, but to accommodate the power lines that they plan on going through there. So the natural buffer that's already there would be gone.
Sir, is this picture of Smith or Satin Leaf?
That's on Satin Leaf, looking to the direction of the west.
So just so you understand, on Satin Leaf, that's a private road. The county does not mandate that that be any particular width, so.
Right. But that's what they're talking about, paving to gain access to the site.
I understand that, but there's nothing saying, we are not mandating that they widen that road to the point where they're taking out those trees.
Right. But that's what they've offered the Satin Leaf neighbors to do that.
I, there's nothing in the condition that says they have to take out those trees to pave that road. They could pave it.
Right where it is now.
Right in the existing dirt is.
What would be, what is the requirement for a road to access a substation, then? Is there a county requirement?
Well, there are minimum county standard widths, which might apply on Smith Road.
Right.
But they would not apply on Satin Leaf.
It wouldn't apply for that?
They're paving to whatever standards they deem appropriate. It's a private road. They're grieving to pave it. They're, and I'll let Duke, I'll let Duke respond, but I don't think they're intending to take out those trees when they pave it.
Are you?
Let's, let's keep the conversation this way. How are we doing on time?
Six minutes.
That's the same view on Satin Leaf, except looking for the east. Again, a lot of tree cover on both sides of the road, which right now provides us a very natural barrier to what exists right there. These are our houses with a view from, from looking back to where the proposed power station would go. You can see the trees along there. These are all our neighbors' houses, most of which are here today. We have, you know, a very nice country-looking view from there. That view would be severely jeopardized by not only the power station, but the lines that will go through there. And in order to fit those corridors, they're gonna have to remove a significant number of trees to go through there. So even though they, they may not need to remove trees for the road, they're going to have to remove significant amount of trees so that they have 100-foot-wide paths to run these new power poles through there. So again, working through this, moving to the north seems to us to be the best option to go with. It doesn't affect the visibility of the neighborhood around there now. It gives them easier access off of Smith Road, which is already a significantly wider road. They could install power lines down Meadow Point Boulevard and not have to cut through our neighborhood to connect up to them. They wouldn't have to spend the quarter million dollars on landscaping because it's in a natural buffered area in there anyways. When we moved in there, we didn't even have any idea that the existing substation was
When did you move in?
I moved a year ago.
One year ago?
Yeah.
And this power station was built when?
The existing one in 2008.
Okay. So it's been there a long time.
It's been, well, it's been there long, certainly longer than we have. And, you know, when we moved in there, saw the power lines. We knew that there was something around there, but we didn't know that was the, this expansion was gonna take place, you know, right into our backyards, essentially. And, yeah, so I talked about fencing and the corridors. It would keep also more or less a power station corridor along Smith Road there, where it would really impact no one, except potentially the commercial properties that could be between Meadow Point and Smith Road. So we would just like them to move north.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
I read in one of the emails that one of the residents out in your community sent to us, or at least to me, it said that Duke Energy would pay your legal fees.
There was an offer of that.
Okay. Thank you.
We had discussed that when they came to talk with us.
So that's a true statement?
Yes. And then actually just.
And the picture of the, the home that you showed us?
Yes.
You said that was somebody that you referenced as owning that home. Is that home under construction now, or is somebody living in that home? When was the home built?
Our home that I'm living in?
No, no, no.
More in the picture.
The photo.
Oh, it was, it was built, probably.
Closed two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Closed two weeks ago.
Yeah.
So, thank you. So the person knew that there was some type of.
No, he was, he had no idea that this construction was taking place.
No, I'm not talking about the construction. I'm talking about the piece of property behind the home that currently has some type of electric facilities on it.
Right.
He knew that.
He probably knew that that was there. He had no idea that there was a motion for expansion.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from here? All right. Who would like to be next? Just come forward and state your name and address if you want to speak. See no one? Okay. You wanna, yes?
I did get sworn in.
Oh, well, we gotta do that.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
I was two minutes late.
So my name is Ryan Riches. I'm a neighbor in the province, moved in in July.
What's the address, please?
4568 Esperanza Court. And I appreciate everybody's time, especially now that we're on, I think, our third iteration here. And we did meet with Duke. They did provide a presentation, which was basically, to me, a regurgitation of the same information that we had seen. Now, granted, when a power substation goes in, it's not just the substation. There's a lot more impact involved. There's visual pollution from the lines. But the thing that kind of came to me was the fact that we're dealing with intelligent people, we're dealing with engineers who can come up with new ideas. They can redo things. They can look at other sites, but not once have we heard, yes, we considered this site or that site. And we've even offered land in the north as a potential site, but we never heard anything back. So as I look at it, I hear from this meeting that it really comes down to safety and grid reliability. I think it comes down to poor planning, because if they planned properly on their first 10 acres the first go-around, they could have fit this all on the 10 acres. And one thing that they admitted in the meeting was, yeah, if we would have done it differently, we could have fitted in there. So for us as neighbors, I don't think we need to pay the price for poor planning. And we do support the energy and growth, and there are so many parcels of land available where they can still tie into the lines to serve the needs. There's growing construction on the 56 corridor there, space. While I was driving up the road, I drove by the Charlie Mack Substation, which has plenty of land available next to it, without neighbors being encroached on either side. So for me, if it is approved as planned, I'm gonna have an extra set of lines running right through my backyard, higher voltage, 230 K versus the 115 K. That's gonna mean not only more stuff cleared out, but it's gonna mean visual pollution. It's gonna be hearing the crackling of the higher voltage on the moisture. And, you know, at the end of the day, I think there's another solution that they can find. It's just not that solution. Thank you.
Before you go, we may have some questions. I do have a couple of questions, just as a curiosity. Where are you on that map? Where's your home?
So where Esperanza Court comes down? There's a pointer? I don't know if I'm very good at pointers.
Yeah.
You hit the wrong button. Which one is it? Delete right here? Okay. So I'm about right there, third house.
Okay. All right. And then you made a comment when you were speaking that you could have provided them the property to the north. Are you saying you control that property?
I don't. Just from meetings that I was in and communications, I had heard that the people who own that land have that ability and opportunity to do so.
I mean, what, did they offer it?
Yes.
That you know of, and at a reasonable price? You know, I mean, I don't know.
I don't know the details of the transaction.
Is it just hearsay?
For the owners, but it was told to me.
Just hearsay?
Through meetings, yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no one else, would you like to come up and respond?
Hello, everyone. Meredith Del Camp from Shuts &amp; Bowen. On behalf of Duke Energy, my address is 4301 West Boy Scout Boulevard, Suite 300, Tampa, Florida 33607. I'm just gonna be really brief and just kind of address a few of the points that were raised with regard to Satin Leaf. It is a private road, and we've agreed to pave it. As a part of that, we do not anticipate taking off any additional trees as a direct result of paving that road. In fact, we're happy to work with the neighbors to the extent that we can protect any, any trees that would otherwise be impacted. We're happy to do so. With regard to moving the substation to the north, it's not as simple as just moving the rectangle to the north. There's a lot of spacing requirements and a lot of other technical issues that have to be taken into consideration when you're moving electrical lines like that, especially since you have to connect to the substation to the south. So it's not as simple as just moving the rectangle. And of course, we don't own that land. It's not for sale. There's been no offer as far as I've ever heard that the, with Lakuchie would be willing to send that to us. And of course, there is another residential subdivision to the north that I'm sure would have a lot to say about it going north as well. With regard to the transmission lines, we did, in a gesture of good faith, show the conceptual engineering of where the lines might come out, but it is, of course, conceptual, and there's always a rub when you show conceptual drawings that they might change. But it's not accurate that the proposed structures are gonna go 20 feet higher. At the meeting with the neighbors, we did commit to a long-term communication strategy of working with them on the design of the lines. Instead of doing two poles, potentially, we could do one pole. And they did suggest some other routes with transmission lines, and we're happy to continue to work with them through the process on that. But unfortunately, the transmission line is squarely not a part of the six criteria for the special exception. There's state law on this, that that's not a part of the local government regulation. And we, I spoke with their attorney when they were engaged on this, and we all seemed to agree that the transmission line sighting is not a part of this process. It's just not part of the criteria, and it can't be under state law. And just one last point of clarification on the attorney's fees. Duke did agree to make a beautification contribution to the HOA, and they stand by that. But at the meeting, when we raised our agreement to make a financial contribution to the HOA, they advised that they actually don't represent the HOA as an entity, that they're just a group of owners that have come together. We still agreed to talk with them about the financial contribution and how that would work. work, but since that meeting, they've stopped communication, and we haven't heard any more from them about any of those matters. But it is Duke's policy that they don't pay attorney's fees, and they know that. We've been pretty clear on that. But we did talk to them about some other landscaping options, but then they stopped communicating, and we can no longer talk through their lawyer. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So I'm not sure who from Duke wants to answer these.
Somebody would come forward so you can respond. And then whoever responds, please give your name.
Yeah, so probably for the gentleman, because my first question is, you mentioned about safety issues, the lines, working on the lines and all that. How often in reality do you actually have to go into these things and do that type of work on a substation?
So I'm not an operations guy, but I will tell you, we predict on a substation like this about five trips per month for maintenance on lines. So sometimes that's inside the substation fence, sometimes that's maintenance around the property itself. Now, if there's a storm event, you know, that's completely different. Like, you know, if this substation or any part of our infrastructure is impacted by a storm event or other event, we would be in there doing some significant maintenance. But no, it's not a weekly line work or a monthly line work or anything like that.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at is that the... It's not a significant amount of work that has to be done, you know, real often. Once these things are in place, the electricity flows, right?
That's exactly the intent, and that's the perfect world. But Commissioner, I would offer that it's not a matter of frequency. It's when that work has to take place. It's critically important to us that, one, we have regulations, whether it's OSHA or otherwise, to have minimum clearances. And so the safety is huge. Even if we only have to touch that line once, we're putting our men and women at risk if we've designed, if we have design flaws. That's why we don't do that. And in addition to the safety issue is the reliability. So if you have multiple line crossings, you're crossing equipment when you shouldn't be, and there's a fault in any of that, you have to take everything out of service in order to address that. And so now we're causing unnecessary outages because of a built-in design flaw that we wouldn't design.
Okay, so you had also stated that one of the primary reasons of doing this is to supply the with Lakouchi substation to the north.
This station feeds with Lakouchi.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm really having a problem with why you wouldn't have expanded to the north when that's where you want, you have to get to anyways. And, you know, there was a comment here by the young lady that, something along the lines that you don't know whether or not that land is for sale. Now, why would with Lakouchi not work with Duke Energy when the primary purpose, or apparently the only purpose of this expansion, is to provide power to them?
So if I could just correct one statement, that the primary driver for this is not with Lakouchi. We are already feeding them, and that's a 69 KV feeder that comes out of our existing station and is feeding them now. On going down Smith Road, we have a 115 KV circuit, and going south, we have a 69 KV circuit, and we are adding the 230 circuits. And so the primary driver of this project is not with Lakouchi. It's not to provide...
So with Lakouchi's not gonna benefit at all from this?
They'll benefit from the overall capacity increase of this project and the reliability of the grid. So the grids are all connected. So we connect with TECO, we connect with FPL, we connect with Lakouchi, we're all connected. So if there is a part of the grid, regardless of which company it is, if there is a problem and a voltage shortage, it affects everybody. And so everybody benefits, but it's a little more abstract and hard for us to, you know, to say their benefit is exactly X. Their benefit is we are feeding them. From a transmission perspective, they step that voltage down, they're feeding the distribution. As the load growth of the area and the grid increases, we need to increase the capacity to continue providing power to them at the quality that they're receiving today. So they're getting a benefit, but they are not the driver of this overall project. I just didn't want that to be misrepresented, that it's with Lakouchi.
And I guess my, regarding the road, so I find this a little bit strange, and maybe it's just because I haven't been looking at this stuff that much lately, but it does say here that says that portions of Smith Road are Pasco County-owned right-of-way. So where does that end?
George.
And what I find strange is it says it...
Ends right there. So Smith Road, the county road, comes south, it turns the bend, and it used to continue south, and it's no longer passable. So the county right-of-way ends right here, and the private Satin Leaf Lane picks up here and continues west. If you were driving down there, you wouldn't notice you're on two different roads, but that's the way the ownership is.
Right, okay. Then I guess my question is probably more for staff, is why does this condition say, however, if said portions of Smith Road are no longer owned by Pasco County?
I can address that, if you don't mind. So when we were meeting with the Satin Leaf owners, their concern was not so much primarily the paving, but also the security of that road, because there's been looters back there. There's been some folks that don't live there doing some things back there that have not been desirable with the neighbors. And they were concerned, if we pave that whole road, you're just inviting more people to come back there. And so the condition of paving, they did want paving, but conditionally, if it could be gated. We've agreed to put up a gate where Satin Leaf goes private because we can't gate Smith Road. It's public. So there was some conversations that we had with the county attorney as well that, well, what if Smith Road is vacated and then conveyed to private ownership? Then we could put the gate up north to give a little bit more security. Of course, that's not part of the special exception process, and so we've agreed in good faith to continue those discussions with the neighbor, with the county, to continue that. So the idea was, if Smith Road goes private, the gate will go up north, and then we'll pave it to private standards. The residents also want to maintain the rural nature of their community, so they're not looking for a giant county-paved road if they can avoid it. So we're gonna continue that in good faith going forward. So that's why the language has the if it goes private or public.
And I would add to that, that probably is a good candidate for a vacation of a road because it doesn't appear to serve the public anymore. It mostly just serves some other private landowner.
Right, okay. All right, that clarifies that.
And Duke's willing to do that in good faith. I mean, they only make five trips a month, but they're still willing to put the expense in to do that with the neighbors.
We couldn't commit in this application that that would be vacated, though, because that's a board decision for a different date.
Right, got it. And just going back to the siding of the project, did you have conversations with Lakouchi over moving it between your substation and theirs?
No, we've not had conversations with them about moving it up, because again, it doesn't work for us. And so for us, that would've been a fruitless effort when we know, and I understand, not everybody believes that we can do that, but we know we can't build north. So it would've been a fruitless effort to sit down and ask for some sort of land swap or purchase to do something we cannot do.
Okay, so if I understand that right, the main reason you can't move north is not because the land is low or high, it's because you can't cross lines because of the danger of that.
Correct.
And the clearances that will need to be maintained. So it's really, that's really the reason you wanted to go the other direction.
Absolutely.
And I would say, if we could do it, we would do it. I mean, the landscape buffer is over $200,000. The road paving, the gates, all the things they're willing to do. If it was a simple thing to do, I don't think we would be here today.
Okay, any questions about the landscape buffer?
Can I add to that? I guess if that's the case, I mean, you started out your presentation by talking about the 2003 hearing, and, I mean, there's a bullet there, "The Florida Power Substation is planned for expansion. Additional phases would be constructed in anticipation of demand." So I mean, essentially what you're saying is, is you knew you were gonna have to expand. Why was the substation laid out the way it's laid out now?
I can't tell you, I wasn't part of the design. I don't know what the constraints were at the time. All I can tell you is what's feasible, practical, and constructable now.
So I mean, it was really what it comes down to is nothing more than poor planning?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
An inability to predict the future is...
Well, in what case could you expand that existing substation to the north? Because you said you planned for future expansion, but how could you have expanded that to the north? I haven't heard you guys say anything like that. I mean...
But also keep in mind, in 2003, a lot of these residents weren't there, so it'd be hard to predict the conflict.
So you thought you could possibly expand across Smith Road?
I'm sorry?
So, I mean, is that what you're saying?
So, and I don't, the layout of the substation was in a different slide. I don't know if we could get back to that, but if...
No, this is theirs, this is not ours. Oh, sorry. I was trying to draw that.
If you could go back to the presentation we dropped today, I think it's easier to explain the type of portion. Yeah, a little sort of that. So that slide right there shows the area. And so again, here, this is the 69 KV yard, this is the 115 yard, and we're adding a 230 yard. If we were to expand the 69 KV, we could go north. But that's not what the load demand today and the projected load growth is calling for in design. We wouldn't have known that 15 years ago, when the original substation was designed. So now we know, in order to meet our obligations of everything we have to meet, we have to build a 230 yard. So not the 69. Again, if we just needed to expand that, we could go north, but we can't. And this 230 yard has to tie into the 115, which is the southern yard here. Another reason why we can't put the 230 up here and then have all the internal crossings plus all the line crossings for the transmission lines themselves.
So could you just redesign that existing substation that you have to accommodate what you need?
We could never take that substation out of service and rebuild new. That's a critical piece of infrastructure. It feeds, like we said, with Lakouchi. It also feeds other areas of the grid. And so we couldn't wipe the slate clean and start building new there, nor would we build in another location to have all the cross connections and the higher impact than what we're proposing here. You know, from our perspective, balancing everything is the lowest overall impact design.
Excuse me, can I say something in terms of cross connections?
So is this gonna be your, is this the last expansion you're gonna propose there? Is that what you're saying?
So we have documented from our transmission planning, and that's the part of our company that projects that this is the expansion plan for the next 25 years.
So it's basically the same thing they said in 2003, you know?
It's not, actually. In 2003, we projected an expansion within six to 10 years after construction.
In the footprint that you had at the time?
I'm not sure if it mentioned anything about the footprint at the time, but...
Well, you obviously didn't own this new property, so...
So what are you gonna do with all that excess property?
So we've already agreed to a condition, if you folks approve the permit, that we're limiting the special exception permit just to the 1.27 acres. So we would not be able to expand at all on that property, that substation, without coming back to the commission, not to staff. We would have to come to the commission. Right now, what we have planned for that property is just the enhanced landscape buffer. I know you heard from at least one owner in Satin Leaf that would like to look at a different use of that. So instead of having all the landscape buffer, what we've said is, you know, we, Duke, can't come into the county and say, we want to do something less than we agreed to with the landscape buffer. But if the owners in Satin Leaf are interested, and they want to come to the county, and everybody agrees that's in the best interest of the neighborhood, of course, we would do that. But right now, what you have before you is our proposal, and it's our proposal for the next 25 years.
So the views that you showed of what things would look like, and, you know, I was looking at this, I guess it's view four, and they're all the same. The resident that spoke, he showed a different view that how he would project. So do you disagree with the fact that you would see these things sticking above the landscape buffering? Because it does look like you cherry picked your views.
So just to be clear, we created the view here specifically at the request of this neighborhood, because we had a view up here, we had another view over here, we had another view over here. We certainly didn't, and I understand the criticism, although I don't agree with it. At the last hearing, you heard from the Meadow Point residents, several of them, and certainly their attorney, who specifically requested we create the vantage point from here. So that's what we did, and that's what you have in front of you. So we made zero attempt to cherry pick. We were responding to a request from the neighborhood and their attorney.
So will you answer my question? I mean, do you agree that they're gonna see this substation sticking above the...
There will be parts, and if you look at the photo simulation, you see there, I don't know if, I don't think it was in the gentleman's presentation, but the one that I handed out, it shows existing condition at planting and at maturity. And the reason you don't see a difference between the second, third, and fourth is because of the landscaping that's on the substation site itself is specifically designed not to grow high enough that you can see it, because then you would have interference with our equipment. So you can see that there is a portion above that. What, again, I would just go back to that, that was the exact vantage point we were requested, and not at a small expense. We had to fly people down here to take care of that. And this is not Photoshop cut and paste, this is very advanced 3D modeling. And so when they put that together, they rebuild based to scale on the design.
Well, I think one of the big unanswered questions is, what do you, and it's something that we're not really addressing, is where are you going to run these new power lines? Because that's the critical issue, I think, for the neighborhood. That's what's gonna be most visible.
Understood. And so we have this existing corridor here. We have to get from here to here. We know that. But as we had said at the previous hearing, and we talked to the neighbors about this, we're at the conceptual engineering. I can't show you a photo simulation based on concept where we don't even know the exact place on earth the structures are gonna go. I can show you that on the substation because that has been designed. This is the design. And we will, at some point, be able to show the neighbors that. But our normal process, where we are, is we don't get to final engineering until well after we have the permit and close the final engineering on the substation, and that's why we're here before you, hoping we can move on to that next step.
Are there specific further meetings and hearings to locate the lines?
Are you talking about site plan approval? Site plan approval would typically be administratively approved next time. It wouldn't go through, I believe there's a notice, they do notice the adjacent property owners. Is that correct? Coraline, somebody?
Yes.
Okay. So they do provide notice to the adjacent property owners when the site plan comes in, but it's not a public hearing, I don't...
But it would have to be approved by the staff?
It's staff-approved. But if for some reason some adjacent property owner didn't like what staff approved, that could be appealed.
Okay. You got a question? Going back to the landscape plan, the modified landscape plan, does it indicate that additional landscape, curvilinear landscape near the driveway off Satin Leaf, does it indicate anywhere what that's gonna consist of?
The landscape plan, it does denote, unfortunately, I just can't read it from here, but it does denote exactly what we have specified.
I just don't see anything on there where there's no, there's no leader pointing to that landscaping, that's why I'm asking the question. There's a leader that points to the existing canopy, there's a leader that points to the setback, and there's a leader that points to the proposed roadway improvements, but I don't see anything pointing to that.
Again, I could give you that information, I'm not the right one. I know we have vegetation there beyond that, I can't tell you exactly what it is.
I mean, to me, that's a pretty critical thing. I mean, I want to know what's there. There's a difference between a 12-inch-tall ground cover and what kind of landscaping you're putting in there.
I can't really read. I've been fighting my need for reading glasses, so I am struggling with, I think it is down in the legend. And again, I can get to the, the specific information, but it's, it's, it's in line, what I do know from the landscape designers, it's in line and in concert with what we're proposing over here. But there's, there's a different slope and grade and everything there, so I think that's, it was designed to be that.
Okay, so maybe you better ask the question of staff. Does staff, when this site plan comes in, can you tell what landscaping needs to go in that location?
Site plan, they will ask.
No, but if, when you're reviewing the site plan for consistency with a special exception, are you gonna be able to know what needs to go in that area from this plan?
If we use this, this is Coraline. If we use the pla, if we, if this plan is adopted as part of the special exception, then the answer is yes, we'll use this plan, if that was your question.
Right, but do you know what type of trees or shrubs need to go in that, the former gap area? Cause that's what Mr. Gerard is asking about.
Yeah, I, I just can't tell what that is. I don't, I mean, if there's, one of those things in the legend says what it is.
Yeah, I think if you blow up the plan, you can see what it's saying down there. And to me, it's looking like it's showing eighteen to twenty-four inch, three gallon, thirty inches on center, and saw palmettos, number one seventy-nine, and number five eighty-six down at the bottom, if you blow that up. When you're looking at the site plan, that's just what I'm getting from it.
Sir, I'm told it's sand core grass. I can't tell you what that is, I don't know the name, or similar species. I, I think most of these are, or similar species. So if, if your county staff, you know, as long as it was compatible with everything else, if your county staff was asking for something different but similar, I don't think we would have issued that.
Is there a reason why it's not the same thing as, as on the west side and wraps around the corner there?
See, the only thing I can tell you is, because again, I'm not the landscape architect or the designer. I know there are significant slope changes over there, so I don't know if that's why.
Yeah, it just looks like you're outside of the banks, but that's. Okay, and at the last meeting, there was a discussion about the existing driveway to the existing house, and there was a break there. Is that break still gonna remain, and is everybody okay with that?
For, for maintenance, but without, that won't be widened. It'll have a, a smog gate. Because you can see, these two access points of the substation itself, and because of the slope and retention pond, we couldn't get back here. And so for maintenance of this yard, mowing and landscaping, that sort of a thing, that we'll, we'll maintain this, which is, right now, this is the existing driveway to the existing residence. It's, that's not showing up here. It's under the truth canopy.
Looks to me like, by this legend, is it's a double row, and I think.
It is.
Kevin's right. So you're talking, you know, eighteen inches height on top of an eighteen, eighteen inch berm, so. I, I don't think that accomplishes much.
Well, and I think it's worth noting that the attorney, the former attorneys for the Meadow Point Association have reviewed this landscape plan, and other than the request for the additional gap filler, which we've done, there have been no further suggested revisions to this landscape plan by that association.
Well, it seems to me that the primary objection from residents nearby is not necessarily that it's there, but that they don't wanna see it. And I think you've done a minimal job in buffering it. If you're talking about a thirty-six inch plant, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna see a ten-year-old child. You know, you're not gonna buffer anything with a thirty-six inch plant. So I'm, I'm very unhappy with the landscape plan. I think it's very minimal. You know, you got a huge project there, you're spending lots of money. Sure you're gonna make lots of money, that's fine. But residents have to be protected. You know, we have to look out for the residents. And, you know, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm not happy with the landscape plan. You got most of your landscaping on the north side, which there, there's nobody there. And, you know, I like the fact that you're gonna pave the road, I like the fact that you're gonna provide them a security gate. I think that's all good. You're doing some good things. The, the other thing I don't like is I don't like not knowing where the transmission lines are gonna go. Because, I mean, how are we gonna tell whether residents are gonna be, have that blaring in their face? You know, you're not, obviously, you're not gonna block a hundred-foot pole. But when you look across the land, you shouldn't see the base, that's for sure. And you need to keep the lines as far away from those homes as possible. And, you know, I know there has to be give and take on both sides, but I think you need, you need to give a little more. That's my opinion.
So Mr. Chair, if Duke wants to voluntarily work with the homeowners on the lines, that, that's up to them. But unfortunately, legislature took away our authority to regulate the lines earlier in this legislative session. We used to have authority to regulate the lines, but we no longer have that authority. So your exclusive authority is to regulate the substation, not the lines.
Right, so.
So if the residents have a concern about the fact that we no longer have authority to regulate the lines, they need to take that up with their legislators who changed the law earlier this year.
But that's not gonna help them right now.
Cause nah, but I'm, but I'm, I don't want them to think that we're disregarding their concerns about the lines.
Oh, I understand, yeah, yeah.
That authority was taken away from us by the legislature.
But what we can do is we can, you know, make, make certain requirements on these buffers on the site itself. And so I'm, I'm open to comments or suggestions from anybody up here.
You ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'm ready.
So I will move for denial.
I second.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Well, so if you're gonna move for denial, since staff has recommended approval, you have to say which of the special exception criteria they did not meet.
Okay, we usually have a list. So I'll say number one is not, and number four does not.
So four is obvious to me from your discussion about why you don't believe the buffering is insufficient. But if you're gonna rely on number one, I think you're gonna have to say what provision of the comp plan they don't comply with.
Well, I have a problem with how they position this thing on there. I mean, I, I honestly feel like you have a utility to the north, their utility. There's a lot of space in between. They, they could design this thing so it goes in between those two. It just seems to me like that makes common sense. Now, I don't know the, I'm gonna look to you as our attorney to point to me where I need to be.
So I think staff would have to analyze that. We do have compatibility policies in the comp plan that you might be able to rely on. I just don't, staff hasn't analyzed that. So if you're wanting to deny based on number one, I think we'd have to continue this so that staff could do a proper analysis of what comp plan policies they may not comply with. Your other alternative would be just to deny it based on four.
Yeah, my concern with that is the, the defendability of our decision.
Well, you, you have, I mean, you, you and the board have discretion to say that their screening and buffering was inadequate. I mean, you know, that, I, I think that's a legitimate basis to deny it as number four. I'm not saying there's not, you can't legitimately deny it based on one. What I'm saying is that you would need to cite what policies, staff has recommended, staff has found them consistent with the comp plan. So I'm not comfortable with using that as a basis for denial unless we identify the comp plan policy that it's inconsistent with. Unless staff is prepared to provide that analysis now, are you?
No.
So I think they would need to research that before they could recommend. So that's up to you. If you wanna continue it so that staff can do that research, that's certainly within your authority to do that. Or you can recommend it to just be denied based on four. That's your, your call.
My, my concern is this, excuse me.
Go ahead, Pete.
This is our, our, our third meeting on this. And from what I, what I really hear is that we're concerned on number four. Basically, it's the landscaping of the area. I also heard the fact that in two thousand and three, there wasn't sufficient planting. But this area has grown in the last three years. And, and the, the electrical grid needs to be updated and worked on. We need the power for this area, whether you like it or not. Whether you prefer to have the landscaping improved, I can go along with that. They can come back here with a, a better landscaping plan. But as far as the power grid, they, they indicated on several occasions, and we keep, we, there are some who keep saying, "Go to the north, go to the north." They have indicated they can't do that for safety reasons. I had friends of mine that work for Con Edison, and the power lines can be a dangerous area to work in. So I think us trying to consider or trying to motivate them, or trying to do something to get them to move north, is like trying to push a two-ton rock up a hill with one person. It's not gonna happen. But I can agree to the fact that maybe landscaping needs to be enhanced. But we do need to move on this at some point in time. They're talking about, I think, where are my notes, sorry? Next year, next November of two thousand and eighteen is when this will come online. By that time, we are gonna see phenomenal growth in this area. We're gonna have to see homes come online, we're gonna see businesses come online, and we're gonna continue to see power outages during peak periods of time. So to deny this based on landscaping, to me, is ludicrous. I'll vote no on the fact that we're gonna deny this. But we do need to move forward with some type of plan. And I have, I have in my notes here, six to ten years back, when this was discussed, this area basically was a cow pasture. Wiregrass Ranch was just that. There were probably a couple thousand people here and probably twenty or thirty thousand cattle. This area is growing. And we can stand here and sit here or do what we want and continue to say no to this plan. I can feel for the residents, and to the residents I say, "It was there before you showed up." So I indicated that I would vote no, and that's what I wanted to.
So we probably need, I'm not sure you have a motion. I know you made a motion for number one.
There is a motion.
Right, but I, I'm advising you that, that I don't think that citing number one is a legitimate basis unless you cite the specific comp plan, policy, goal, and objective that it's inconsistent with.
All right, so I'll make my motion to move to deny based on number four.
I second that option.
Okay, so any further discussion? Well, let me just say before we vote that my, my personal preference would be, I hate to say this, but to continue it again, to come back with a better landscape plan. You know, because I agree that we have to have the power. But we also have a responsibility to protect the residents as much as we possibly can. And, so.
So, so let me just comment on that. So if you were to deny this, obviously Duke would then have no opportunity to present to you a better landscape plan.
Right.
It likely would then get appealed by Duke to the board. There, that, for that appeal, it's limited to the record, so there's really no opportunity for them to give a better landscape plan to the board. So what would probably happen is if the board wanted to see a better landscape plan, the board would be forced to remand it back to you to get a better landscape plan. So I'm only pointing this out to you that, that you could do it, but it may end up back in your laps.
Right.
If, if that's your main reason, and Duke thinks they have a better landscape plan, they may just tell the board, "We're prepared to give a better landscape plan, but the planning commission wouldn't let us." That's what, that's maybe what happens, so.
Okay.
Your call, though. I'm just telling, trying to predict the future of what's gonna happen.
For, for those that are concerned with the landscape plan, is the primary objection the gap, the old gap that's filled in, or is it?
No, it's more than that.
It's more than just that little gap?
So, I mean, you could, and again, I'm not telling you what to do, but you could continue it with the understanding that if it got continued again, the only testimony you would receive is on the landscape plan. In other words, you would not hear any other discussion, testimony, that, that your discussion at the continued meeting would be solely on whether the enhance, an enhanced landscape plan would be sufficient.
Okay, so based on that, then if, if it does, let's say it comes back to us, we still weren't satisfied with it, option one is now off the table to us.
No, because the other advantage of continuing is that staff could be prepared. If you continued it and you were still inclined to deny it, staff, hopefully by that time, would have done the research to support a denial based on number one. My only concern with you denying it based on one today is staff has not done that research.
Okay, so what, Chris?
Well, my question on that would be that if staff's done the research, then their opinion, it's consistent. So how would they come back and now say that?
Well, staff, staff has rendered an opinion that's consistent. However, it, they can tell you that if you were inclined to find it inconsistent, these are the policies that you should rely on. That's what they could do. I don't, yes, it's their opinion, it's consistent, but they can also advise you, just like I would do as a lawyer. If you wanted to argue the other side, this is what you would do. Right, so they, they're capable of doing that.
I think that makes better sense, that, that we just continue this to another meeting. They obviously have heard the fact that several of us are not satisfied with the landscaping. They have the opportunity to beef it up considerably and then read it back to us. If it's, we're not satisfied at that point in time, then we have the grounds to say, hey, you've had four opportunities come before us. Landscaping is an issue that I hope you hear loud and clear, and you say yes or no at that time. That makes sense to me, so.
So the only other recommendation I would make, and again, what you do is up to you, but I'm not hearing that you've given them a lot of clear guidance on what is deficient about the current plan. So it may be that they asked to meet with you individually to go over that. Or if you wanna delegate one member of the planning commission to meet with them to separately go over what you think needs to be done to beef it up, that may work too. But if I were them, I would, since you haven't given them the specifics of what's wrong with it, I suspect they're gonna wanna meet with you. So you're gonna all meet individually with them, or maybe you could delegate somebody who, to be your spokesman about what needs to happen with this landscape plan. Your call on what you do.
I think that's a good point. There, there needs to be more guidance, so.
Okay, so is there any other discussion on the motion?
I think that we need to keep in mind too, that this existing piece of property that they have, they could do what they wanna do on that piece of property. It's not, you know, it's there. I mean, they can do it. It's the new piece that they're trying to, you know, move this to. So nobody can stop them from that. And I, I'm, I'm, I mean, we gotta have progress too. I agree. Believe me, a hundred percent. I'm all, I, I feel for everybody on both sides, but, you know, you have to have that progress. And, you know, if we're gonna vote deny it, you know, I'm, I'm gonna vote no. I'm gonna vote not to deny it as well.
See, unless the motion maker wants to withdraw his motion, you have currently a motion on the floor to deny at least a number four.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I would withdraw the motion to continue it. So they can come back to us with a, it sounds to me like, you know, if we're gonna deny it based on four, an enhanced buffering plan on how to address this. And I don't want anybody to think that, you know, I completely support the expansion of our utilities, you know. But for all these residents out here, we wouldn't need a, a new substation. I've lived here for forty-eight years, so, you know, it's, because of the growth that's coming is the reason why we need this. It goes hand in hand. So I'm not against doing it. I just think that the whole way that they've, they've done it leaves a lot to be desired.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Let me just make a, a comment in reference of what I have been listening here today. Also, three times that we have a meeting and talking about the same, uh, topic here. In my opinion, a one-hundred percent, we are in this area that is growing, is growing really fast. We need to increase our utility to basically feed the capacity that our needs. My problem about this is the lack of communication between the two parties. It's frustrated for me after we have been discussing this several times, that you two cannot get together in the proper way to have a, a conclusion and try to get this resolved. I've, so, I don't see any kind of flexibility in both sides. And, and in the same time, we move to deny, I know I second that, but if we move to deny just in the idea of number four, we're going to be tied to just to the landscaping when there are so many items that need to be resolved here. So I kinda go, go with the direction just to, you two try to get together. And also, we, I agree with you in the idea to have some representation of the commission to, to be sure that we have the clear guidance about what the needs of landscaping to improve these plans need. And, and I, I can attend to that.
So are you making any motion to continue?
So, yeah, I, I rescinded my motion, but I'll, I'll move to continue.
To what date?
To, when is the next date?
Next state city date?
Next state city date, yes.
The thirteenth, December thirteenth.
I won't be here then, so...
You should've thought of it earlier.
No, I think my plans come together quite nicely, thank you.
Well, it doesn't have to be to December thirteenth, the continuance.
I, you know, it's thirty days enough, I don't know.
So, so the applicant wants to make a comment on the continuance. What's your question?
Just had more of a comment. I think we're all a little surprised at this point that we're talking about the landscaping plan, since we've been here three times. And our understanding is that the landscaping has been fully vetted. And our meeting with the Meadow Point Owners Association at their home on the twenty-ninth, the landscape was sufficient. And they had no further requests. The reason why the landscaping is a little shallow in that area is because that's where the lines come out, and you can't have large vegetation there interfering with the lines. So that is a restriction that we're always gonna have, no matter how many additional, you know, trees we put around the perimeter. But that area where the lines come out, you can't have conflicting landscaping.
Are you telling me that you can only have thirty-six inch high vegetation under a big power pole?
You can have higher vegetation, but, but you can't have much higher than that.
That's what you're implying, that you have to have a legastrom.
Where's the law?
We, we can have up to twelve feet. And if that's a condition you folks would like to place, we'll, we'll agree to that today. That's not, you know, thirty-six inches, it, we, it can't grow more than twelve feet is, is, and if that's what you would like to put in there, we would absolutely agree.
And if that's a concern, I think we can agree to that today. I, I don't think, Maureen, that we're willing to take another continuance, because we've fleshed out all the issues with all the owners. We've reached a consensus with Staten League. And the remaining issues from Meadow Point that we're hearing are the transmission lines in the north versus south. Concern that we've really discussed at length, there's really no resolution on that. We've done everything we can do in terms of landscaping, lighting plan, paving roads, adding gates. Everything that can be done above the county's requirements, we're willing to do. But there are a couple things that we just can't do in terms of crossing lines and making safety concessions. And so if you wanna add a condition today for the, the additional landscaping in that corridor, then I think we'd be going to accept that.
My, my apologies, I'm a little slow on this. Where, where is it that you're talking about, where the lines come out?
So, a-again, I just have to give you the disclaimer, this is all conceptual, so I can't tell you exactly where it's gonna go. But this general area here, there would be lines, and this area here, there would be lines. Because, again, this is our existing corridor, there's already a sixty-nine KB line that runs through here. We need to tap into that. So, you know, we've, we've gotta get from this side down, and we have to get from this side down.
Okay, well, assuming that your contours on your conceptual plan there are correct, that berm and that little gap that you filled in there, where you're planting those is two foot below the top of the bank of the swale. So, I mean, literally, the, the plants are eight, six inches below the top of banks. You're gonna see twelve inches above the top of bank of that swale. That's what you're planting. Okay, so I, I find it really hard to believe that that's as tall as you can provide underneath of those power lines, which you said you haven't designed yet, but you know they're gonna come out there, so you have to keep the landscaping down. I think I don't like that excuse.
Yeah, which is why, if, if you wanted to say, you, you can put landscaping in here, you know, no shorter than twelve feet, or the species will, you know, our, our guidelines and what we have to meet is if it's within a corridor, it doesn't have to be exactly under the line, but if it's within the easement, the species can grow at maturity, can be no taller than twelve feet. That's, that's a hard...
Yeah, that's why I was asking the question of your, where, where the easement was. 'Cause I thought the easement was where the existing power lines were. I didn't know you had an easement where you thought you may have to put them, which you haven't designed yet, per your presentation today.
So, a-again, our, our easement comes down here.
Yeah.
And then with the, with the new lines, they, we have to tap into it.
But that's east of that driveway.
And then over here, because, again, in order to do this, we have a sixty-nine KB that are likely to come down here. In our discussions with the neighborhood, where we brought back to our design engineers to try to get that as far east as possible, so it's as, you know, wherever the lines are gonna go, as far away from the residences as possible. I just can't stand here and tell you today it's gonna be exactly here or over here. But this is that, we, we don't have a whole lot of options unless we were to impact a whole other set of folks and, and take...
Who, who owns the property to the south where you have to run the new lines? The homeowners association?
Yes, Standard Pacific, the developer.
So they have to grant you the easement?
Or they can condemn it. They have condemnation authority.
Or you can do condemnation, right, okay.
So, again, I mean, if, if, if the concern is, you know, thirty-six inches isn't adequate, um, we can go up to twelve feet. And if that's a condition you folks wanna put on, we'd agree to it today. We, but the, what we're really hoping you don't do is continue it. So we're requesting a vote either way that you're inclined to vote.
So, you know, I'm gonna go back to the, the first time that I asked, it was like, I think it was one of the first questions I asked, was what type of siding study did you do to determine the options of where you could put this? And the answer was, well, we didn't do any, because, you know, we have a, a, a substation there now. We just wanna expand the one we have. So, you know, I'm just gonna go back to the point that I don't know that, you know, this is, yes, we need the expansion. I get that, but I don't know that this is the appropriate place for it. And so if, you know, based on that, I'm starting to lean towards the more of the one option. But I would need some guidance from staff and the legal side to cite some things where it's not consistent.
So, staff, do we have compatibility policies in the comp plan? Do you... Certainly must be somebody over in that, in this room that can find them.
Yes, there's compatib- compatibility, um, chapter in the comp plan.
You have a particular policy number that requires...
Not right, not right handy, no.
So...
I mean, I, I'll, I'll go back to say, you know, that Duke is saying, "Well, that's where we wanna put it." So we didn't study anything else to see what else it would, what else would happen. So they didn't study to the north, they didn't study across the street, they didn't study anything. They just said, "We're gonna put it here," and that's all there is to it. So, you know, now they're saying, "Well, we can't move it because of safety things." Well, that probably is right, but I don't know that. I'm a financial planner, for God's sake. I, you know, I don't, I don't know about that. But it seems to me like that, you know, they designed it in the first place, they can redesign it.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm an engineer, but not this kind of engineer, and the infrastructure's here. So if you go expand somewhere else, I get it, but you're gonna have to run lines and impact, probably, you're gonna be in the same exact area, so then you're gonna impact a bunch of other residences. So, you know, I'm sorry, I, I just disagree with that. And I'm not voting on this unless there's a talk. I disagree that, that you can go find, just find another place down the street, that you're not gonna impact other people as well. I mean, this is a growing area, there's houses everywhere. And as a school planner, we've struggled to cite our schools in places that minimally impact residences. But at some point, as Peter said, you have to expand the infrastructure in order to provide power to all of these folks.
And, and if you look at this little drawing that they've got here too, and this is just me speaking my piece, they're trying to expand another hundred and fifty feet on the parcel, probably another hundred foot on the building. If they took that building and took that hundred foot and decided, "Oh, we're gonna shift that to the north," they're still gonna need all the transmission lines and everything else. It's not gonna matter. We're still gonna have to have the lines. And, and, I mean, you know, I'm just trying to think with common sense there, this is all I'm trying to do.
Yeah, my, my particular preference would be to add the requirement for the twelve-foot landscaping. Minimum twelve-foot landscaping.
Let's do that.
But I'm not making the motion.
David, we have your, uh, we have your section, if you would like to hear it now.
Can you read it to me?
It's policy, future land use one point four point six, utility compatibility. Protect the integrity of existing neighborhoods from the effects, if any, of bulk electric transmission corridors, natural gas pipeline easements and similar facilities, by prohibiting to the maximum extent of the county's jurisdictional authority, their location through or immediately adjacent to existent, existing neighborhoods. Want me to read it again?
I think there's another policy, and this is why I hate doing this on the fly, I'll be honest with you. I think it's three point, three point two. It talks about substations having adequate buffering and being proper, I mean... I'm not comfortable that staff has thoroughly analyzed all of the comp plan policies that could be relied on to deny this application. I mean, I'm not... And I'm not sure it's fair to them to ask them to try to do this on the fly, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna move to continue to the date city meeting in January two thousand and nineteen. I don't know what the date is, but...
The date is the tenth. January tenth and date...
Move then we continue till January tenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Do you have a second?
My, my main problem with that is just I don't know that we've given them enough direction to, I mean, continue it to what, so we can hear the same thing again. I don't know that they've heard enough to come back to us.
Well, I think David had a, had a good idea, if you wanna do it that way, is, you know, identify somebody on this board to meet with them and make sure that they have a plan that we can all live with.
I could live with that motion, and I would suggest that the chairperson be the representative for us. That way we, you know, what I heard is you don't want this to be continued, correctly?
We would prefer a vote one way or the other, we would not...
Yeah, you want an upper limit vote, and I can understand that. You want, you want this to come to net. So can, can, can we, can we approve this based on the fact that we can, uh, select one person to be our representative?
Not really, no. So, so that, that concept only worked if you were gonna continue it. If you, if you're inclined to approve it, you can approve it with an additional condition. Now, I guess, I suppose you could prove it with the condition that the landscape plan be brought back to the planning commission. In other words, you could prove that, you could prove it the special exception, but require that the landscape plan, final landscape plan, be approved by the planning commission. That would be odd, we wouldn't normally do that, 'cause normally the landscape plan gets approved by staff. But if, if, the only way you're willing to prove it today is if you see the landscape plan again, that's how you would do it.
Okay, so we had a motion, we did not have a second on that motion, so it died for the lack of a second. Is there a new motion?
A motion that we have, I'm not sure of the wording, so I may need some help on that, that we approved, uh, Duke Energy to move forward with the substation and the condition that they bring back to the planning commission a enhanced landscaping, uh, plan from the modified one that we saw today. Would, would that, uh, be sufficient wording?
I think that's probably, that Mr. Staff's gonna have to probably modify some of the other conditions to make it clear you're not approving this plan. And that you'd be bringing, have to bring, they'd have to bring back to you a new plan prior to them submitting a site plan approval. Does that work, Coraline? Help, somebody help me?
Yes.
Is that, would that condition work?
So it's either that, if that's what the planning commission prefers, that they see the landscape plan before they submit officially for their site plan review to current planning, then yes. Otherwise, it would be, let them submit for site plan review and just bring the landscape plan back here for your approval.
I suspect the planning commission's gonna wanna proceed and approve the plan before they ever submit another... 'Cause otherwise, they're sort of married to whatever they submitted, I think.
Okay.
So...
Sure.
I think the concept would be that you would, it would come back to the, the landscape plan would come back to the planning commission before they submit their site plan approval.
Yes.
Is that, is that what you're saying? Yes. And with the other modified conditions that staff presented today with the road?
No, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not negotiable there.
Okay, so, uh, we have a motion, do we have a second?
So I guess I'd like to ask the applicant, well, I guess you need a second before you go to discussion, go ahead.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Okay, for discussion.
So I'd like to ask the applicant if they're okay with that.
We're okay with that condition.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, signature, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Can you, can you use a roll call vote, please? And just before you do the roll call, if you're against the motion, please say nay, so I think it's a little clearer, okay?
Mr. Ryan?
I'm for the motion. Nate.
Mr. Gerardi?
Aye.
Mr. Hansel?
Aye.
Mr. Sayes?
Nate.
Mr. Gray?
Aye.
That's one, two, three, four, and favor and two opposed.
Okay, so the motion carries?
So the only thing I would add for clarification, just for the public, is since the landscape plan will have to come back to the planning commission, the funding commission acts at notice public hearing, so that means the applicant is going to have to notice those residents when that landscape plan comes back to the planning commission. I just wanted to make sure the applicant and staff are, and the public are all aware of that.
Okay. Next? Don't make it any easier.
Ah, supposedly. There you are. Raymond Phillips, Current Planning and City of Cape Coral. This is a conditional use amendment for Angelo's aggregate material. Angelo's currently operates as a class one mine and a class two landfill. Angelo's is surrounded by AC zoning, undeveloped land to the south, undeveloped land to the, um, east, the closed Pasco landfill to the east, and rural single families to the west. The applicant is requesting the removal of the time limit, which was for fifty-seven years, or upon disposal of fifty million cubic yards, whichever occurs first, and replace this condition with a maximum elevation of three hundred and twenty North American vertical datum from two hundred and twenty, um, National Geodetic, which is approximately a hundred feet. Staff notes that we had correspondences of objection. You will note that there was a ex parte communication recently from Mr. Griffin. You all received?
Can you get a motion to receiving file up, please?
Move to receiving file.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And staff ultimately recommends approval with the conditions as outlined. The applicant has asked for a maximum of thirty minutes to go over their planning conditions.
Okay, so you got the timer over there?
Good afternoon, Barbara Willhite, twenty-five, twenty-three, Permit Place, Newport Beach, Florida, three, four, six, five, five, for the applicant. I know you've already had a long afternoon. We're gonna do our best to be brief and concise. We'll still provide you the information that we think you need to make a decision today.
And you've been sworn?
I have been sworn. I have Matt Armstrong here from Stantec. He's going to co-present this to you. These are from your comprehensive plan. This facility is part of the county's solid waste system. It actually, this, the, the capacity at this landfill is, um, is part of the level of service standards for the county. We're actually mandated by that last policy to increase disposal capacity to meet future needs, to plan. You all have had a whole afternoon of, of, um, struggling over poor planning and probably wish that things would have been done differently earlier. We stand here today, earlier. We stand here able to do things today to plan for this expansion that will make a difference to the neighbors in the future. We stand here with, working with an existing footprint, instead of an expansion to the north or to the west. This is a slide about capacity. This landfill is the only landfill in Pasco that takes this stuff. It's class three materials, it's construction debris and demolition plus some. And that plus some that means something to me is, when you have a renovation, that includes removal of carpeting or furniture, this is the only place in Pasco County you can take it. The county does have a permitted class three facility, but they have fourteen acres left, one four. That's it. They are not accepting class three waste from commercial haulers in Pa, for Pasco County.
So this is not garbage, this is construction debris?
This is not garbage. This is not household garbage, household waste. These are things that when you remodel or you build, which there's lots of going on, these are where those things go. Asked my own contractor, I'm remodeling, I said to him, I said, where did my stores go? Where did my carpeting go? And he said it went to this landfill. The county has a contract, when they remodel and build, that's, it's this facility. This is the facility for this type, these type of materials. So I did, so I asked, I talked to the solid waste, um, director, and, and these are the things he pointed out, which I just said about, they have a fourteen acre cell. They have a class one sanitary landfill as well. Sanitary landfill is the household waste, and, and they protect that capacity. So they would never use that for class three materials. So ultimately, he said to me that the county needs this increase in capacity, and then the capacity will benefit the county. And I think staff is, has communications with Mr. Power as well, so, um, this existing, this facility is properly cited. It's located in agricultural land use designation where nuisances are anticipated and residential uses are not primary. That is your code adopted in, land development, excuse me, that is your comprehensive plan adopted in the year two thousand and six. That's what it says. Purposely put those policies, the county purposely put those policies in the comp plan in two thousand and six, so you would have, as the planning commission today, direction, as you cite new facilities, this is not a new facility, as to what's primary where. So when you hear it's rural residential, it is, that is not the primary use. There are places in your county where rural residential is protected, but not here. Here, you have, the county decided there's place, we have to have places for things that aren't popular. Surrounded on three side by agricultural land uses, it's adjacent to the county's closed sanitary landfill, which continues to vent methane gas, and it's near two chicken, uh, active chicken farm operations, pretty substantial operations. The need for this is not going away, as it's, the demand is building new and remodeling existing, which is what we need for our economy, is to continue to do those things. Past, our population's expected to double, and we, through this proposal, we can double the capacity of this landfill without increasing the footprint. And, and we were asked about that at your last planning commission, you're doubling the capacity. Almost like we should feel bad for that. You're supposed to be planning for capacity. That's what we're, your complaint says you're supposed to do, and we can do it within the same footprint. After meeting with you and, and hearing from the residents at the last planning commission, we have been, and Matt will explain, um, some of his reach out and what he has done since then. But Stantec has prepared and designed a substantial berm, and we're gonna, we're gonna meet the mark when you look at our berm. Because it was, it was prepared by, not prepared in-house, it was prepared by independent landscape architect. And my instructions to the independent landscape architect was to be independent. Be a professional making a recommendation, not to consider anything cost, not to consider anything other than your professional recommendation. So he'll present that to you. That landscaping plan will mitigate most, if not all, the visual impact and the crease, increase in height. And, and we also added additional condition, and you all saw those conditions, that put a specific date to install where we cease activities until we install that berm, very clear. With that, I'm gonna let you, unless you have any questions for me, I'm gonna let Matt explain to you his landscape design and go over some of his visual impact analysis again, um, with you.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Barbara before she yields? Okay, thank you, Barbara.
Hello, Matt Armstrong, uh, Stantec Consulting. I was not here unfortunately in the beginning when we swore ourselves in, so I apologize for that, I might have to do that very quickly here.
What's your address, Matt?
Uh, we're at seven, 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 South Harbor Island in Tampa, Florida.
Okay, thank you.
I do. So I don't know if we need a motion, David, for that.
Move to receiving file.
Second.
Motion to receiving file and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
All right, so I'm gonna take a breath after the last marathon. I'm taking a breath after the, after the last marathon there. And breathe, breathe a little bit on this, because as Barbara mentioned, we, we were asked to be objective and come out here and look at this for exactly what it is, and for exactly what is being proposed. And what's, what's the truth on the ground, what are the facts, what's the math say, what's the geometry, what can you see with this, uh, request? So I, I've spent a lot of time out here, obviously not, not as much as the people that live here, um, who's home, homes are out here. But I, I've spent as much time as I, as I can to, to look at it and to be objective and, and honest about it. We've got before you a plan set, three, three pages, that would eventually become part of the condition, the formal condition of approval, that sets forth very clearly exactly what it is, where things would go, what types of plants will be there, and when. So that's the idea, is to clean that up in the condition, so it's, it's very clear to everybody now and in the future, whoever is, is out there, either operating or living there, this is clear to, as to what's supposed to be there and when. Site plan, you know, quick orientation, we've got the west side here, Duck Lake Canal Road runs along the west side, down around here to Enterprise on the south end, uh, and then Otten Road, again, up on the eastern side. There's the existing closed county landfill, um, and we'll get into some of the other things that are out there. The gray area is existing footprint that's authorized. The actual operation is over here towards the east right now. There is an existing berm along the southeast corner, it's about eight feet high, it has oak trees on it. We will be adding to that with, with the new berm design. And this is what it looks like. This is along Duck Lake Canal Road. What we've attempted to do here in design and in the notation is to create a berm that's a little bit more natural in the landscape than just a wall along the road. It has some variation, east to west, and in height, from twenty feet down to zero feet in some areas. We've got pine trees there, some live oak, magnolia interspersed, uh, to create some more visual interest rather than just a dirt pile and some trees on top of it. We, we've tried to, uh, address where we think there's more of a need for things, and some of the existing oak trees that are there, there's no reason to take those out if they're there already, uh, doing their job. There's some, some enlargements, again, that's part of the condition to clearly show where these things are and what the types are, their trunk sizes, uh, and, and how those things will be maintained after they're planted. I know that was an issue on existing berm as some of those trees died out, uh, they weren't necessarily replaced. That's going to be part of this condition as well, to, to manage and maintain that berm, uh, not just let it go. But we want to make sure that these things stay, stay put and grow over the time. And as Barbara mentioned, uh, one of the reasons we want to, to get this done by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, is that these things have time to grow. Right now, the operation is over on the east side. It's expected that it's gonna take well over a decade to get anywhere close to the western side of this. But if we put the berm in now, and we've got that time for these things to grow and mature, by the time the operation gets over to the west, this berm will be well established, and it will be doing its job. Uh, these again are some additional details. This is the portion of the berm that goes down around, uh, Mr. Griffin's property is here. This is one of the areas that we, we met with folks and walked around back here, that wraps around. This berm will, will continue on and meet up with existing berm near the entry. Okay, so visual impact analysis, what can be seen from where? I put this picture here because this is the existing slope of the landfill that's out there. There's part of a berm along Otten Road, right here is Otten Road, on the other side of these trees. And there's a, a swale at the bottom here that collects any, any of the runoff from the, from the hillside. And this is what it looks like. The majority of the operation that's there now, it looks like this. There's at any given point about three hundred feet by three hundred feet, uh, a square, that's what they call the working face, or the open face of this thing. That's the area that kind of moves around at any given point, and it's covered, uh, daily, at the end of every day, they, they cover that with dirt and mulch, and then eventually some grass to stabilize it.
So you're saying, I'm gonna just make this clear, when you put stuff in there today, tonight it's gonna be covered with soil?
Yes, sir, that's right. And what I've learned in my crash course on, on landfills from, from the engineer out there, who's, who's here today, he knows a lot more about it than I do. The Department of Environmental Protection permit for a class three landfill like this one requires that you do that weekly, at the end of every operating week. They do it daily, uh, simply because they found that to be a better way to manage, uh, any, any potential odors or, or dust or anything like that that might come from, from operating out there. So they cover it daily. That does affect your capacity a little bit, because that material that you're putting on top of that every day is space that could have been used for something else, so that does take a bite out of your overall volume. Which is again, one more reason that we're looking to be smart about, um, using the space that we're already impacting and not going outward somewhere else, or trying to cite a whole new thing somewhere else. It's a whole lot easier to visually mitigate something that's there now than to try to expand it or go somewhere else. So, uh, we took some, some section views, uh, through the proposed berm along the western side here, because that's where folks are closest to this thing. These are the folks that live here, and, and they're, they're closest to this, most affected by it. There is, uh, I think you've seen this before, there is a, a, a nice, it's a lovely home here along Duck Lake Canal Road. I, I think the gentleman may actually be here today. The idea was, if you are living in this house, and you're looking out the second story window at elevation a hundred and two feet above, you know, your, your sea level, so to speak, and you look across Duck Lake Canal Road over the berm, two hundred and twenty feet is the current permitted maximum height, two twenty. The berm and the vegetation at, at maturity would obstruct that view, you wouldn't see it. You probably wouldn't see any of the slope, you wouldn't see the top of it. At three twenty, which is what we're proposing to do, that same line of sight just skims across the top of this, uh, landscape berm here, and you might see the top of it. The reality is, there's not a sharp point like that, it, it really slopes off. As this thing nears its eventual maximum, fifty, sixty years from now, uh, you'll actually slope this off, uh, more gradually, and it, it comes to a point that's quite a bit further away. So as you go up, you all, you also go further and further away, which is also part of that visual impact when you are looking at something from a distance like this, where it's, you know, close to over a mile away, rounding off the top of a green hill, past some trees, the impact is, is, is relatively imperceptible. Uh, this is from Duck Lake Canal Road itself, if you're driving along the road. I can get this to cooperate here, ninety-two feet elevation, you look over the, the trees here, even at the low points in the berm, where we are proposing to use, uh, trees here, that's still gonna obstruct or obscure the view. Again, three twenty from Duck Lake Canal Road, you don't see it at all. You wouldn't be able to see that hill from the road at all with that vegetation planted there. Uh, this is another view for, a little bit further south on Duck Lake Canal Road. Again, even looking through the understory of the trees, and again, these are varying heights, oaks and magnolia and pine. The pines are, are really gonna obscure most everything, and they're quicker growing than the oaks. You don't see it at three twenty. We also did some location views. It was important to, to try to look at not the cherry picked views, but worst case scenarios, not, not try to hide behind something, but let's put it out there and see what you can actually see. So up here, I'll start off with A, this is on the northwest corner here, Duck Lake Canal Road wraps around. This is what it looks like today, looking southeast. And about fifty to sixty years from now, after the berm's matured and after this thing is topped out, it's gonna look like that. So we go from today to sixty, fifty years from now, uh, you, you don't, you don't see it. The berm is in foreground, the light green goes up to two twenty, that's what's permitted today. That little sliver of dark green, that's the difference between two twenty and three twenty. It's, it's hard to tell. It's hard to tell. As you drive down Duck Lake Canal Road, going a little further south, this is the present day view, it's, it's a nice field. You can see some of the dirt pile from the existing operation, this is what they dig out in order to make room for the construction debris as it comes in. This is also what would be used to cover things or even to build a berm. Again, this is what it looks like today, fifty, sixty years from now with the berm, this is what you'd see. I'd like to point out that you see the top of the berm here, the light green, that goes up to two twenty, that's our current max. That other shade of green goes up to three twenty. That other shade of green goes up to 320. Again, that's, it's receding into the distance at a slope of 3 to 1, and it's rounded off at the top. That is the sliver that we're talking about. That is the difference between 220 and 320 at that distance in reality. That's what's giving us all this extra capacity over this timeframe without increasing the footprint. This is Enterprise Road. This is what it looks like today. That's what it looks like 50 to 60 years from now. This is on Otten Road, and we're looking southwest. The county's closed landfill is right over here. This is the gate that gets into that. So, this is what it looks like today. That's what it's going to look like 50 years from now. Again, you see the sliver on the top. That's your 100-foot difference, from there to there. And in reality, they're not going to be two different shades of green. It's going to be one green, grassy hill. You literally could not tell the difference if you were standing there, from one to the other. I'd challenge anybody who's human to go and tell me that 50 years from now, you're going to be able to tell the difference between 220 and 320, looking at this thing.
And Matt, will there be any trees planted along that section?
This, again, this is the county's piece in here to their closed landfill. I don't know of any plans to plant anything here.
No, I'm talking about the higher elevation.
Oh, at the higher elevation? You know, it's a question that's come up, and according to the engineer, you can do that. There are landfills that have done that, that've installed trees along the hillside. You have to plan for it, so you can leave some soil. I'm not sure exactly what the depth is. It might be something like four to six feet in the slope. So, you can plant that tree there, so it's not growing into construction debris or exposing anything like that. But you can plant trees on it. Again, driving up here today, and having spent a lot of time out East Pasco, you do see some hilltops that have trees on them. You see some that don't. There's a little bit of both. I think the one thing that, again, in my opinion and opinion of a landscape architect, the last thing you want to do is just put a ring of trees around the top, because that almost draws more attention to it. If you did put some trees on it, it'd be kind of random, and some would be lower and some would be higher. So, you're not calling attention to the very tip-top of it, and having it look weird. But you can plant trees on it. This is one last view I wanted to point out, because I spent some time with the property owner here to the south, and he was gracious enough to spend some time with me, and I'm thankful for it, because I learned a lot more about the area than I knew before that. It's down Singletary Road here. They're about 4,000 feet to the south, give or take a few feet across this field. And we wanted to see what that looked like from there. This is the present-day view from that fence line. You can see the fence line right here. This field that goes across here is actually owned, in part, by the applicant. That is their pivot irrigation and one of their cows. In the distance, right through the pivot irrigation, you can see some of the dirt and grass along the existing operation. Again, that's about 4,000-plus feet away. That's the difference. Again, the light green is what we do today, up to 220. That current elevation at the top is about 171. So, where they're at today, where the tipper is on that working area is about 171 feet above sea level. Current permit allows you to go to 220. And then that darker shade is the difference between 220 and 320. And again, 50, 60 years from now, in reality, it won't be two different shades of green. It'll just be one shade of green, and really hard to tell the difference between one and the other. So, that's kind of my piece on the visual impact, what we thought you could see and what you can't see, and what we thought you should do to try to mitigate that from a landscaping perspective. And if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer it.
I don't have a question for you, but I have a question for Barbara.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, Barbara, I know you emailed revised conditions to the planning commission. Is the only condition you've added since, because this condition about landscaping is not in their agenda packet?
Right.
Okay. Is the only condition that you've added since the last time this went to the planning commission, is it the landscape condition? Is that the only new condition?
The landscape condition, and then these two here.
Okay. So, do you have, okay, do you have a PowerPoint that's got the landscape condition on it too?
I did.
My concern is, the public hasn't seen. I realize you've emailed these revised conditions.
I know, I was just having that conversation with Mrs. Hal over here. And she can pull up the email and get it up on the screen, I think, because I anticipated that, what you're saying. So, we're trying to get it up on the screen, because I don't have them verbatim.
Yeah, I just don't know if the public is seeing the revised conditions you're proposing.
I understand. Well, some of them have, because I emailed to them. Anybody had emailed to when I, because we're trying to be very transparent and work with everybody. We emailed everybody we had. That's how you got Mr. Griffin's email back, was because we emailed it to him. So, but Corlin's going to try to pull it up, I think. But, so the additional conditions, while she's pulling that up. So, not only the landscape plan, when it's going to go in by, it's going to be maintained. We also have added a condition about the daily cover, that it will continue to be daily cover. DEP just requires weekly cover. Then we also talked about, one of the residents spoke about Enterprise Road, and that there was sometimes Class III debris that was either dumped on the road or came off the trucks. So, we made a commitment on a, let me read my slide here. I want a different slide there. Hold on one second. On a weekly basis, discarded Class III materials along Enterprise Road will be cleaned up and disposed of at the facility. So, between applying the soil every day, going and cleaning up Enterprise Road on a weekly basis, providing for a substantial landscape berm now that will have time to grow, because we're planting it now, we are mitigating impacts to that neighborhood. It is an existing landfill there. That's what it is. This is where it's been located. The alternative, you know, and thank you for pulling that up, the alternative is to locate a new one somewhere else. It's a 500-acre facility that we have, and we can just stay in that same footprint. No new neighbor impacts, no new environmental impacts, and no potentially higher transportation costs. Because when you cite these, the biggest expense in moving things like dirt or materials is the transportation cost.
Okay, so what's up on the screen now is your proposed new landscape condition, correct?
Correct. And if you go scroll down, you'll see the other two conditions that I just went over as well.
And is staff in agreement with these conditions?
Okay. Are there any other questions for Barbara up here?
I have a couple. So, from the current conditional use, there's two conditions that the applicant has not fulfilled. So, that's right-of-way and berm not being built correctly, right?
That's correct.
So, if they don't adhere to this, what's the mechanism for us to enforce it?
Well, enforce, I mean, David can probably explain, but you cite them and take them to court to enforce it?
There's two ways. We can cite them, or we can revoke the conditional use. Either one. Now, it appears that, the way this is drafted, that this new landscape condition's going to replace the existing one they didn't comply with. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
And that this new right-of-way condition will replace the existing one they didn't comply with. Is that also?
That's correct. And as I noted at the first hearing, I have that deed for the right-of-way. It's executed and being held in my office, and as soon as hopefully this gets approved, it'll be conveyed to the county. So, there's not an issue there. And we have, Stantec's berm plan is much better than if we actually would have put up a big dirt berm along Duck Lake. The residents will have a very, very, very nice berm, which actually will be attractive as people come down Duck Lake. They'll have something very nice there, so.
I mean, it does appear this new condition will be easier for the county to enforce, because there's a date by which they have to have it done. I don't think the existing condition had a date.
We didn't have a date. I also put in there very clear, no activity until it happens. So, the remedy, so when you, if you take us to court, the remedy's right there. We've already said to ourselves, "Court, we can't operate until we do it." So, it's already got the built-in remedy of what the consequence is for not doing it. It means we can't operate. So, it's pretty serious and written clearly in that manner. I took your comments to heart and your concern to heart when I wrote that.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, hearing nothing. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back and hear from anybody that wants to speak. Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting. This is the point at which the people in the neighborhood have a chance to come up and ask questions or make comments. The only, everybody's limited to three minutes each. So, the best thing to do is just try to focus on different things. Don't just say the same thing every time. So, whoever would like to come up and speak, let us know if you've been sworn. Come on up, give us your name and address. And you've been sworn, sir?
My name's Earl Sangatary. I live on 10953 Sangatary Road.
Okay, and were you sworn in?
Sir.
Were you sworn in earlier?
Yeah.
Okay. And someone have to receive.
Where are you? Each of them are in visual picture?
The particular picture right here was taken at 125 feet elevation. This one, all right, go to the next one. There could be a couple of the same ones.
Okay.
All right, this particular picture here. No, I'm sorry, this one was taken at 125 feet elevation. You can see all the trucks. And right now, when I met with Mr. Armstrong here, they was on the south end. Right now, they're dumping on the north end. And I'm on the south side, and I can still, you know, see all the dumping and stuff. This one here is, they took too many for me. Is it going? All right, yeah, this picture here is at 117 feet elevation. Just a little over, about 1,300 feet from the dump site. And you can surely see that you're looking right over there, little berm or their trees, you know, without a bit of problem.
Where's that picture taken from, Mr. Sangatary?
Just on Sangatary Road. Up and there is about a quarter-mile south. I think my photographer was charging me by the picture. This here picture is on the south end now. I mean, on the north end where they're dumping right now. That picture was taken there at 105, 105-foot elevation, which, I mean, you can, you know, my biggest point is that they want to go to 320. The highest point in Pasco County is on Clay Hill, which is 301 feet. Pretty soon, when they get to 320, everybody in Dade City will be able to see this. Matter of fact, just so happened this morning, I was in a hayfield in between 35A, the Old Lakeland Road, and 301. Just, I was just east of the Publix, and I can already see the landfill. You can. And far as them covering the garbage every day, they do not cover it every day. Maybe once a week, maybe less than that.
You need to speak in the microphone.
Sir.
You just need to speak in the microphone, because we've got to keep a record of it.
They do not cover it every day. That there is probably three days' worth right there, and it hadn't been covered yet. But just, my point is, why do we want to let this landfill run the view for everybody on the west of Dade City with all the big tall hills and stuff? You'll be able to see it from anywhere you will be. That's it for me. I don't take long.
Okay, thank you.
Sir? You paid a lot of money for these places.
Okay, who would like to be next? Have you been sworn?
No.
Okay. Yeah.
Can you swear a firm testimony about the illegal treats of wealthy people?
Okay, your name and address.
My name is Bernard Wong. I live on 12431 Duck Lake Canal Road. Everybody's just talking about how it's going to look and what it looks like right now. My concern is still, one gentleman told me that there is a clay bank built under the dump site that holds the garbage from seeping into the water. If they do elevate it, will they still reinforce this bank clay? That's my main concern.
Okay.
Will it pollute our waters?
We'll get that answered for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, who's the next? Anybody else?
Hi, June Namor, 36819 Hibiscus Court, Zephyr Hills. I'm from South Florida originally, and I retired and I came up here. And we have garbage landfills about one exit off of 75 from me. You could see it from everywhere. The further back you go, the more you see it. Yeah, if you're right up close to the road and you plant trees, you're not going to be able to see it. But there was one near Sample Road we could see. If you're driving up 95 near Fort Pierce, you see it. You see the birds all over. Now, I was looking up some of the materials that are put in the landfill, and I'm not an expert, but I would be concerned about things like gypsum and stuff like that, whether the rain gets through the water and what happens to it as it disintegrates, or deteriorates. I'm sure some of these guys might be able to answer that question. But I know that it's also cement, and I would think you could recycle the cement more than maybe put it in the landfill. And I'm also concerned, because I know the thing that happened with Mosaic. And if you have a lot of weight, and they say they're using the same footprint. So, if they're using the same footprint, they're putting more weight on top of it. And if it seeps through, you know, that's our water. That's all of our water. We're all drinking the same water. And, I don't know. I buy Protos at the local stands. They say they, it's from farms nearby. I don't know, it could be a farm near the landfill. Maybe I really wouldn't want to buy that Protos. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I was not sworn, I was late, sorry.
Okay, another late one.
Can you swear a firm testimony about the illegal treats of wealthy people?
Good afternoon, my name is Melissa Stahl. I live at 41003 Beery Lane, which is a private roadway. I am to the I am to the north of Angelo's, unfortunately, Calmain Farms went in next door to me, and they're my neighbor in between the dump. The conditional use policy that they have claims that it will not increase the traffic on Enterprise Road. The traffic on Enterprise Road has increased more than one hundred percent. I encourage each and every one of you to go park in the cemetery and watch the parade of trucks that come up and down there. There's been at least two, if not fatal, very serious accidents at the intersection of thirty-five A, Old Lakeland Highway, and Enterprise Road. The original dump was there. My family has owned this property since nineteen eighty-five when the original dump was active. There are several noxious smells that come, not from the original town dump, which I understand is vented for the methane gas, but I came home on, I don't remember the date now, but I wrote an email when we had the previous conditional use meeting, and the smell was coming from right outside of the gate to Angelo's dump. I could not drive down Duck Lake Canal Road because of the weather had been so bad and they had not graded it so you could, you know, get down the road without tearing your car up. And we proceeded from Enterprise Road to Otten Road. I had to stop on Otten Road where the vents are for the methane for the original town dump to roll down the window so I could breathe, because I couldn't breathe. It was such a sulfuric smell, was overwhelming. Again, the trash along the road, she's saying that they'll start picking that up. But there's been a tire sitting on the road since we had the last planning commission meeting that has not been picked up. I understand that they need, like the people before you, you said, you know, you understand the need for growth and all that, but if they already have that original footprint, I don't understand why they need the additional hundred feet. Three hundred and twenty feet is approximately an eleven-story building. You can't tell me standing on Duck Lake Canal Road, you won't see that. You can't tell me driving down three oh one to historic downtown Dade City, you won't see an eleven-story building standing out there. I encourage you to go climb the observation tower at West Lakucha State Park on Otten Road. You can definitely see the landfill from there. So I would appreciate it if you would not approve this. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if not, you want to respond to the questions and concerns?
Sure, what I'd like to do is have John Arnold, the project engineer, talk to the question about the clay layer materials, recycling cement and weight.
Here's the fellow that's coming back in to ask that question.
Good afternoon, John Arnold, thirty-four-nine-twenty-four Williams Cemetery Road, and I was sworn in earlier. With regard to the geotechnical aspect or the foundation support for all of the cells, currently, we have to get permits and approvals from the Department of Environmental Protection, and that is a condition of our existing conditional use permit. So typically, what happens, for the next cell that you're gonna go into, you do soil borings, and you document to the DEP the subsurface conditions, and then a geotechnical engineer analyzes what the loads would be, that would be placed on that foundation, just like a building. And you design the bottom liner system specifically for the site-specific geology. It's a very detailed and involved process. So if we were able to go higher, the department would require us to do the investigation and the analysis to prove that the conditions are sufficient for those loads. What we currently have at our site is a three-foot clay barrier layer, which has a permeability, which is a measurement of how much water can go through it, of ten to the minus eight centimeters per second. Sand is about ten to the minus three centimeters per second. What it means is it's very impermeable, and it would take literally hundreds of years for one inch of water to be able to migrate through that three feet of clay. Since we've opened operations, we monitor both for gas at the perimeter of the landfill, as well as groundwater, and that's done by a third-party consultant. And those results are submitted to both the county as well as the DEP. We have no impacts to groundwater, and there is no gas migration from our site today.
Where, there's no gas migration, I'm just curious. The lady just before you said she had a strong sulfur smell, or what would that come from?
Well, we are in an area, and I've been out here frequently, where we have an existing organic Class One landfill that's been closed. And the state of the practice and design is when you put that cover cap over the old landfill, you go back in and you drill holes down into the waste so that you can vent the gas, and the gas has odors. And the reason that's done is to protect the stability of the cover system and to make sure gas doesn't migrate out through the landfill into adjacent structures. It could be a combination of that existing landfill, as well as the chicken farms. As we talked earlier about a Class Three landfill, it's really construction materials and demo materials. Occasionally, at the working face, you'll get some material, maybe a drywall that's wet, and it can put a temporary odor if you're in the vicinity of it. And the way that that's managed is you put soil cover on it, and that covers the odor.
Okay, so what they're alleging is that there hasn't been daily coverage of the soil, but...
Well, I would argue with Mr. Singletary, or I don't agree with him. That picture was, it wasn't too long ago, it was, that's the working face of the landfill. And so you saw the truck backing up and were pushing down to make the slope. And cover will be placed on that to cover up the side slope.
So, okay, for how frequently?
We will put it down daily. The current condition is weekly, but we have no problem daily.
Current condition is weekly. It's a DEP permit condition. We have added a condition that says daily, so, an enforceable condition that says daily. They're doing it daily. There's some debate whether they did or didn't. It's now a condition of approval. On traffic, I'm just, we're not changing our day-to-day operations, so we are not increasing or having any additional traffic impact. Enterprise Road is paved, all the way from thirty-five A to Otten Road. It was paved by this project to the county standards, so it's already paved. And with that, I do want Matt to come back up, because we have the, what can you see from where? And so I want him to go over that, because I know he's given that quite a bit of thought.
Hey, Barbara, what's the current permit good proof, year-wise? You don't remember, I don't remember that.
Let me have John answer that.
Oh, sorry, I should've...
That's okay.
It's valid through September of twenty-sixty-one.
Twenty-sixty-one right now, currently?
Yes.
And what's the capacity out there now?
Oh, it's right around, I'd say, we view an additional forty million cubic yards.
So you're at how, what elevation are you at now?
The elevation of that truck, that was right at elevation one sixty-five.
Okay, and you're, right now, you can go to two-twenty, so?
Two-twenty.
Two-twenty.
All right.
And let me just ask, what's the percentage left of your capacity, I guess? Do you have eighty percent left? Do you got sixty percent left? What do you have left?
Approximately seventy percent.
Seventy percent?
Yeah.
At two-twenty?
Yes, that's correct.
Just wanted to make sure her data was accurate.
Yes.
Okay. Jamie, anything?
Not yet.
Not yet.
All right, so the questions come up in talking with folks, hey, gosh, this is gonna be the highest thing, highest hill, highest place in Pasco County. When this is all done and said, into the future, when it's covered and it's green, and whether it has trees on it or not, it's gonna be the highest hill in the county. Elevation-wise, I'm not gonna argue that point. That's true. It will be higher above sea level than the other places that we have in the county. Whether or not you can see that from some point in the county, I haven't been to every nook and cranny looking for it. I can tell you, I've driven on Enterprise Road over by three oh one, where it comes up on the hill, headed out that way, and that's kind of where that Burger King is on the corner there, and you head up, and there's another field. I drove up as high as I could get, got out of the car, stood up on the trunk, trying to look around and see what I could see. I couldn't see it from there. I'm not gonna argue the point that someone could find a spot where you could be able to see this area. But I think the point is, whether you can see it from a distance or not, will you be able to tell that there's a significant difference between two hundred feet, two-twenty, and three-twenty? And I would argue no. Unless you get out there with your laser-servant equipment and a drone, or a satellite, or some other tool like that, you will not humanly be able to tell the difference between two hundred and twenty feet and three hundred and twenty feet, wherever you're standing, near, far, you're not gonna be able to tell the difference. I think that that's really not an issue as far as what you can see, or whether it's the highest thing or not. In fact, if you're up in air space, it's all gonna look fairly flat. Now, if this was a tower or a building, and it was up sticking out of the landscape, I'm sure you'd see that. Your eye would pick up on that. It would be there, it would cast a shadow. You'd be able to tell that that was the highest thing around. But to have something that large, at that distance, at that scale, sloped as it will be, tapered off at the top as it will be, and grassed as it will be, I don't realistically think that anyone would be able to tell the difference between two hundred and twenty and three hundred and twenty. That's my opinion on, as far as the visual impact. I can't speak to the other things, but I know that you won't be able to see it. If there are any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer it.
I have a question, but I'm not sure Matt can answer. My question is, what was the reason why you didn't expand horizontally as opposed to vertically? Who can answer that question?
I'll do a little bit on that, because I talked to John about it, and then I can probably let John talk to the rest of it. From what I understand, one of the reasons that they didn't want to expand that footprint was because they did want to be a good neighbor in that regard and not encroach on the setbacks that they'd already established. I think there was a concern on the part of the applicant that by expanding outwards, getting closer to the neighbors, that that would be a little bit more objectionable than trying to utilize the footprint that's there and just add to it. Given the size of this, you could go a lot higher than three-twenty. The DEP and those folks wouldn't have a problem with that. But we realistically said, gosh, we really don't see a need to go beyond that, and we certainly don't want to keep climbing and climbing up to make something that's this giant pyramid out there. By rounding it off at three-twenty, you've got, you've got something that blends in a little more.
I would just add to that, Barbara Willhite, that the client owns a thousand acres to the south, and that's down where Mr. Singletary lives. We have a pending application with the county right now to have an industrial project there. So the thought is that we would have a project that would use that property for something that would produce and not extend an impact by increasing our footprint. So, and because of the analyses that Matt has done, and seeing what that impact is between two-twenty and three-twenty, that's the balance, is, you know, you already have that area and the footprint. You don't have to go and permit another area. We can use that property to the south. The property to the south is a thousand acres on a rail line. Very unique piece of property. It's, the PDC's looking at it. They actually promote that property to see if we can get some kind of industrial use down there. So that's the balance, and that's what the owner has brought forward.
Hey, Barbara, how much land do they have out there total?
This facility's just under five hundred acres, but they own a thousand acres to the south.
Okay, so they have fifteen hundred total, okay. And this was five hundred and forty-something, I saw somewhere around that.
Yeah, I have the number. Yeah, it's five. It's around five hundred.
Okay, are there any other questions from up here?
Man, I'm just having a hard time swallowing. I'll be straight up, well, you have Pasco County and having something that tall. You know, and I've grown here, too. I mean, I see your visual stuff of it, I mean. And we use it, you know. I'm in the construction business, I mean, and I know we need to grow things, too. But, I mean, I fight with that. I mean, you know, there's still seventy percent capacity left. You know, I mean, you know, I would not be honest if I didn't voice my opinion about that to everybody, you know, and how I feel about it. You know, I've lived here, I'm sixty years old. I've lived here for fifty. So I picked oranges out on that property when I was a fifteen-year-old kid to make extra money, to be able to drive a car, you know. So it's not that, it's just, man, it just seems like a huge expansion to me. I'm not opposed to expansion. I'm not opposed to needing a landfill or needing that area. I know that we do. You know, we have to have that, just like we need to have the power substations. But it just seems like a huge, huge, huge expansion to me. And we're already through two thousand and sixty-one, and we're only at seventy percent capacity. What's this put us through? Twenty-one fifty? I don't know. You know what I mean? I'm just saying what I think, guys on the board here, so. I'm sure I'm not going to have an opinion.
I mean, I'll add, I mean, on the flip side of that argument, I mean, last, obviously, Barbara, I think you started with this. The last person that was here, we, I personally, I know, I was sitting up here thinking, why did they do a better job of planning? I mean, they're trying to have foresight and be good neighbors and do all those things that, you know, we would've hoped the other people have done. You know, I might've said this before, but, you know, things happen where, you know, the projected capacity is twenty-sixty-one or whatever it is, but I mean, you could have something like happen in the Panhandle, and a storm come through, and all of a sudden, a big chunk of that capacity goes away. And you don't pull a permit for something like this overnight. I mean, it takes a long time and a lot of planning to get through, because frankly, I mean, nobody wants it behind their house. Nobody wants it in their area. They don't want to look at it, even though it is, you know, Class Three ways, so. I mean, here, I kind of commend them for the planning and trying to stay within the footprint of their existing facility.
Anyone else? Comments? Michael?
I mean, the only thing I'll say is that this is not the only place a landfill can go. I mean, and yes, it requires probably a lot more hoops to go through, no doubt, but it's not insurmountable, and it can be done. You know, I think about the landfills that are along I-75, and you see the height of those. I mean, you're gonna see this, you know, and it's gonna have a huge impact to this area. And just the fact of nearly doubling the size of it, I just don't think that that's the prudent way of going.
Okay? I was thinking, which I often do, is where, if this is not approved, where will the trash go? I shouldn't say trash. Construction debris go? Would it go on railroad cars up to, up north, or where would it go? If this is not approved? And it may sound, twenty-sixty-one is not that far off. It's only forty-three years away. So, as someone said, it does take a long time to get permits, especially if you get to go through the federal government to obtain. I think I heard someone mention that, DPA or some...
No, it's actually, this would be a state approvals. It's not a, I don't believe there's any federal approvals.
No federal approvals?
Not yet.
Mr. Arnold, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's all state.
Okay. So, that's the question I have, is the value of approving it today so that in forty or fifty years down the road, that it would be available, and that planning, good planning could go into effect? So that's what I see. Otherwise, the debris, the construction debris has to go someplace. So, and I hate to see it go into the oceans. I really do, but, so that's why I tend...
Roberta, Roberta, do you have anything?
No.
Well, it seems to be a sort of a wide range of opinion up here. I know, I understand the trepidations. I understand the need. I guess my question to you would be, do you have any flexibility in terms of the level of the, of the new permit?
You asking about the height?
The height. The height.
So we're, so this is something I always get into with housing too, where we propose 400 houses and then somebody says, well, would you do 300? And you do 300, but did it make a difference? Do you know? Can you drive through a subdivision and see if it's 400 houses or 300 houses? If it's 320 versus 290, will it make a difference? But we'll have hurt the capacity. I mean, that's the answer. So, we've proposed something that will provide the capacity that's needed in an existing landfill location.
Okay. There is a reason why these things are, you know, capped out at a certain size because they shouldn't just have unlimited ability to put stuff in there for an unlimited period of time. And, I mean, that's the reason why there's these approval processes that cite these things in other areas. There's, there's other mechanisms in our, in our laws that allow places to go in, in other areas. So, I don't know. I just, I just personally think that it's enough for this, this one. And the conditions that are currently on there now are not, have not been met. You know, and that track record means a lot to me. The fact that they agreed to doing certain things in the past, and they hadn't, they have not done it. Now, the county hasn't enforced it, and shame on the county for not doing that. But, it's, the track record, I, I don't think is too good.
Do you have any specific things you're thinking of, Mike?
Well, I mean, you know, the two conditions that they haven't met. They said they would give right-of-way to a road and they built a berm, and they, they did not do that. And to me, that means a lot. It goes, it goes to credibility of the user.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, certainly I was biting my tongue, but I can make a comment.
This would maybe be a tie, Chris.
Well, if there is a tie, I will be voting, so I can go ahead and explain if I get to that point. I, I kind of agree with Mr. Hansel here. I see it, I see it similar to the previous item, that, you know, part of planning and part of the growth of our county is we have to provide for capacity for this kind of stuff. And you have an existing landfill here, and I get the fact that it's going to be a little higher. And, yeah, I, I can understand the problems with that. But, same token, you're, you're not having to go somewhere else. You're not going to impact some other place somewhere else. You're just expanding in their current footprint. And I think, if it comes to me, I'd vote to approve it.
Okay. Is there anything else from up here, anybody?
Let me ask a quick question. Mr. Cox brings up a good point. He said that the, in the past, there have been some violations. Who enforces the, the?
Don't ask David, Tom.
So, so the, the answer is, it is the county that enforces violations of conditions. Fortunately, unfortunately, it's mostly a complaint-based system. So, there's probably lots of violations that occur in the county that go unenforced. But until somebody files a complaint saying, so if a neighbor had called and said they didn't put in the berm, and I'm looking at garbage, then code enforcement would typically go out and say, and cite them because they didn't put up their berm. I'm assuming, and Ray could tell me if I'm wrong, that nobody files a complaint about the berm. The right-of-way typically wouldn't, we wouldn't notice that their failure to do that unless we were going to improve that road and realize we didn't have the right-of-way. But, so I don't know that a neighbor would notice their failure to comply with that. But in theory, a neighbor should have noticed that they didn't build the berm and should have called code enforcement and say, hey, they didn't build the berm. Did that occur, Ray, or?
David, no, we were not called about the berm. The only reason we noticed these things is because they came in for the amendment, because we didn't have staff basically on top of these projects.
Okay.
You know, I want to say, it's not the, I don't think it's the obligation of citizens to, to be the police of it. It's the obligation of the applicant who said, I would do this. And they didn't do it.
I kind of have a different view. If I'm driving down the road and I'm doing 20 miles over the speed limit, who's at fault? Me, or the sheriff's department, or law enforcement? So, it's kind of like a catch-22 there, I think. In some ways, yeah, it's up to the company, or the vendor, or the corporation to take care of these problems. And they should, just like I should, all of us should obey the speed limit. So, that's, that's what I dwell in my mind when you talk about enforcement of these things, is shame on you, shame on me for going over the speed limit. So, that's the way I view this. So, that's why I tend to, to.
So, let me, you know, let me say the other thing about enforcement. It's somewhat difficult with a landfill, and I would say in a mine as well. When, when there's a building going up and there's conditions that need to be met, typically staff will check before they issue that final certificate of occupancy for the building. They will verify that all the conditions have been met before that certificate of occupancy's been issued. For a project like this, there's really no final trigger for staff to catch those kinds of things. And so, I think, I do think that in general, enforcement's a little more difficult for staff when it comes to something like a mine or a landfill than it is for a building. I'm not make, trying to make excuses. I'm just saying that final trigger is not there like it would be in, in a, in a building type development.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add? I know nobody wants their excuses because if I make up an excuse to tell you, you know, the client's perspective, then it sounds like an excuse. But let me just tell you a fact, which is, the conditions don't require the berm that's along Enterprise and Autton where they are operating. They put a berm up there because that's where they're operating. So, I just thought that was an important fact to know.
Okay.
Let me just make a quick comment that, in my opinion, is important. I kind of agree and that the point that Mr. Girardi made in reference to where we are and we don't plan is for me really important. When I say this, when we have just a recent sample of what happened in Panama City, Mexico Beach, and God forgive, but we are still a vulnerable area. And that is, for me, is really important. Maybe we have 70% of capacity at this point, but if something happens around this area, we are going to, we're not, we're going to be in trouble. And where we are going to have that debris. Keep planning for me is think about those elements. So, in my opinion, I think the responsible way to proceed with this one is allow this type of business to increase the capacity, you know, because they need it right now. I think also in the business point of view, if they have 70% and they are doing this investment, it's a good sign for me to support that. You know, they are still running a business with 70% of capacity and they have the initiative to in, in, invest, to increase the capacity within, without the need or the immediate need in short term. I think for the community in general, I understand there are people who live close to that. They don't like the idea, but we need to think about the entire area where we live and what is the impact these people can bring to us in case of something happen, you know, a storm, or so many situations that can happen where we live.
Okay. I think, has everybody spoken? Anybody, anybody other, do you have any comments?
I just want to say, I'm not opposed to growth and expansion, you know, at all. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to happen and it's inevitable. But I just think that's an awful big one that we're requiring right now. I mean, or requesting, but I mean, it's what I do. You know what I mean? I just had to voice my opinion. You know, I don't want to be on the top of a hoop hill and see another hill that's taller than the hoop hill. So, I'm just being honest on that stuff. You know, I'm, I'm not opposed to the growth and I know we're going to need it down the highway, but we're good at 2061 now, and now we're good at 2200. I, I, you know, I'm just saying how I feel.
All right. So, do we have a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion to approve with the conditions that the county has established.
I second the motion.
So, does that include the modified conditions that were?
It does.
Emailed to you and handed out today?
Correct. The ones that are attached to the, what we got today.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Do we want a roll call?
Mr. Ryan?
How was it, nay?
Mr. Cox?
Nay.
Mr. Girardi?
Aye.
Mr. Hansel?
Aye.
Mr. Saez?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
I did not vote.
Oh.
At least not so far.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. All right. One more to go. Final one. The one we should have started with.
Yeah, right.
Final one.
Yeah, really.
So now it's good evening. Coralyn Howell, current planning. The next item is P-15. Cobblestone MPUD rezoning request. I handed out some revised conditions, but do you want me to go through the agenda first before we get to those? Yeah? Okay. The project is located on the east side of Gall Boulevard, approximately 1,172 feet south of Chancy Road, extending south for about 4,200 feet and extending on east and west across Crystal Springs Road. Proposes a rezoning request from an MPUD to an MPUD to allow a maximum of 600 single-family detached, attached dwelling units on approximately This is the proposed master plan for the site. The applicant is also proposing a variation, variations from the land development code as follows. Section 901.3. M. Point 1, access management, cross-access frontage, reverse frontage road, general requirement, and section 901.6. D. Point 11, street design and dedication requirements, the continuation of existing street pattern and street access to adjoining property whereby the applicant wishes to deviate from the requirement to provide an internet connecting roadway to the south. Variations from the code may be reviewed and approved by the BCC and the Planning Commission during the public hearing held on any application for a MPUD rezoning. Variation shall be allowed where the board and the planning commission find in particular cases that the proposed variation meets or exceeds the intent of the code. For the first one, for 904, hold on a second. The intent and purpose of the access management cross-access reverse frontage road is to provide safe access to land develop, access to land development while, while preserving the flow of traffic in terms of safety, capacity, and speed, by controlling and regulating the spacing and design of roadways, medians, and traffic signals, limiting the number of conflict points on vehicle experiences in its travel, separating conflict points such, as much as possible where they cannot be completely eliminated, removing slower-turning vehicles which require access to adjacent sites from the traffic lanes of, of through vehicles, requiring cross-access between developed parcels. That's the intent of the cross-access, the first one. The intent and purpose of the street design and dedication requirement is to provide, for the continuation of existing street pattern and street access to adjoining property to give access to abutting areas and to provide, provide for proper traffic circulation. So the applicant was proposing that, in their justification, that the proposed development already provides interconnectivity to the eastern portion of the MPUD, and I have some points up here, along the portion, along Crystal Springs Road. In addition, an access point to the cobblestone subdivision from Gall will be directly aligned with access to the existing subdivision. That's this one. And then a road connection has provided to the commercially-zoned property to the north that was previously approved as part of this MPUD, allowing for future safe interconnected vehicle and bicycle travel. A southern connection would allow cross-access to an existing commercial use incompatible with the residential vehicle and bicycle traffic. So, just to explain staff's analysis of their justification, it's under the previously-approved RUCS MPUD, the property to the north, as indicated, was designated for commercial use, which is, what we're talking about is this right here. The interconnect is there. So this piece, the rest of the triangle, was commercial in RUCS. But the RUCS MPUD has since expired. Now, I'm not saying the zoning has expired. The, the conditions of approval have expired. So it's an MPUD with no entitlements. So that's, that's really not commercial anymore because it's a RES 9, future land use. So if somebody wanted to come in for commercial, they would have to do a comp plan amendment and some type of rezoning because it's an MPUD with a RES 9.
Coralyn, can I stop you for a second?
Yes.
So, as I'm reading the request, it seems like they don't want to interconnect to the south. Is that correct?
That's correct. Right there.
So, if they're not objecting to interconnecting to the north?
No, no. These, see these points on here, north? That's there. They're proposing there, there, and there.
Okay, so everything you have circled, they're okay with interconnecting?
Yes.
Okay, so their objection is interconnecting to the south?
Is my little arrow that I just drew is what they're
Okay, so.
Objecting to.
In my opinion, you should probably be discussing what the, what the future use is to the south as opposed to what's the north.
Sure, I understand that. But because they brought up the north and that they were interconnecting to a commercial development already, that they're going to connect to another commercial
So your point is that?
That's already existing, that's incompatible. So e, either way you look at it, they're already exist, they're already interconnecting to a commercial that was presumed commercial, but they refuse to interconnect south.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that because, you're saying you don't agree with their justification for why they're not connecting to the south, because they're already connecting to a commercial to the north?
Correct.
Okay. I now understand.
Okay.
Can, can you now explain what, what's happening to the south?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The cross-access to the south is necessary to further the goals of reducing conflict points and improving traffic circulation along collector and arterial roadways. Gall Boulevard is an arterial roadway. Crystal Springs is a collector, and the proposed State Road 56 extension is an arterial. In order to avoid additional trips on this roadway network and thereby creating safety issues, a cross-access is necessary between the abutting properties. So, I drew an arrow recommending where a nice interconnect would go. So you would have here, straight through is a nice reverse roadway.
Okay, so Coralyn, my question is, what is the property to the south, and what is it zoned for?
The property to the south is major attraction, flea market.
Okay, that's not, that's the flea market. Okay, that's not, that's the flea market, it's not a zoning.
Sorry.
Okay, what is the zoning?
I'm thinking. C-2, C-2 AR and AC, it's AC.
Okay, so is it, is it commercially's?
Wait a minute, you're confusing me.
Okay, sorry.
Existing uses. Flea market residential.
Well, I know what the existing uses, I'm asking what the zoning is. Because typically-
C-2 general commercial.
Usually flea markets are kind of an interim use, they're not a permanent use of the property, so.
I think it's AC. I can always look, you want to know for sure?
Well, i- if their objection is that it's commercial, I guess I'd just like to know, is it in fact commercial? The property to the south?
Uh, I'll have to look.
C-2.
It's C-2 and MPUD.
Okay.
Alright then, C-2, MPUD. The MPUD is right here.
And then my other question to you is-
A little one.
Does that property to the south have access to Crystal Springs Road?
The property to the, no, I don't think so, I think there's, let me, where's my arrow?
Like, I can't tell from-
There's only one access.
Like, I can't tell if that property wraps around and then connects to Crystal Springs Road, apparently it doesn't?
This one, the flea market? No, it doesn't have access to Crystal Springs, there's lots there.
I'm basically asking that could they get to the property to the south using Crystal Springs Road, and you're saying no?
Who, who? Flea market, the flea market?
No, if you were trying to get from this project south to the flea, I'll call it the flea market.
No, you gotta go on 301.
Right, so there's no way you can use Crystal Springs Road to effectively be an interconnect?
No, uh-uh.
Okay.
No, you have to use 301.
Okay.
So, now that... Okay, so-
So, the other question for you is, the property east of Crystal Springs Road, is it part of this MPUD or not?
Y- yes.
Because you're not showing the whole plan there.
I, I, I thought I changed it. What happened?
See, look, your master plan isn't showing that whole eastern property.
You know what, I changed it, somebody, this is a sabotage. This is-
Conspiracy.
This is a conspiracy, somebody went in there and changed it back.
I think it was Denise, she's not here.
Denise, that's it, that's why she's not here. Yes. There it is, right there.
People, that's not the master plan, but okay, I'll-
Let me change, that's the boundary of the MPUD. So, yes, it crosses over. I swear I changed that, I swear.
Okay.
Anymore? May I go? I, I have pretty things in here.
You need to cover your other changes to these conditions, Coralyn.
I know, I'm not done yet.
Okay, well, you said you asked if you could go.
I got, I got a headache.
So, to summarize that whole part of conversation, the applicant doesn't want to connect to the south and staff wants them to connect to the south.
Yes, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna summarize.
Okay.
So, blah, blah, and all this I talked about. So, here, here are the existing ones, they said they already provided, so they don't want, they don't have to provide one to the south. That's where staff is recommending that the, a suggestion that an interconnect can go, or there. There's, I knew I put one in there.
There it is.
There it is.
That's the rest of the master plan.
That's the rest of the map. Okay. So, the, the street connections, so here's their arrows and here's my arrows. Those are their arrows, these are my arrows. Either one there or one there. So, the argument, main argument is this. We take away all, all these accesses, right? Here's, here's where I live and here's a 7-Eleven over here in this commercial. Here's a 7-Eleven, here's where I live. So, in order to get to that 7-Eleven, I have to drive out of my house, cross over 301, go down, cross back over 301 to get me a Slurpee. So, I'm, I'm crossing over there and twice. When you provide an interconnect between abutting properties, I can just go zippity-doo, down there, down there, I don't, I'm not crossing any roads. I'm not threatening my life on this major thoroughfare to get a Slurpee.
You don't like US-19?
No. No. So, that was, that's the whole purpose of interconnect, well, not the whole purpose. One of the main purposes is to provide the interconnection between abutting properties so you can have safe travel amongst the properties. That may not always be commercial. The, the major attraction, that may not always be commercial. They could come in and rezone and be a residential property too. But the argument's the same, because if Grandma lived there and I lived there and I wanted to go see Grandma, I don't want to be crossing over 301 if I don't have to.
Coralyn, you also mentioned the extension of State Road 56. Where is that extension?
So, the extension of State Road 56 is way down here. But the point, the whole point of this... Hold on, let me get back to the aerial. 56 is down here. It comes out over here, below the flea market. My whole point was, when they come in and they interconnect to the south, the flea market comes in for development, no matter what it is, provides an interconnect, and you can continue on getting down to State Road 56. You don't have to get out on 301. If I wanted to go on 56 east, I don't have to cross over 301, go down there, cross back over. That was the point I was trying-
So, my question was, 56 is going to go along the southern boundary of that flea market property?
Yes.
Okay.
Down here, way down here somewhere.
So, there'll be a future major east-west road going through that flea market property?
I don't think it goes through it. Ari might remember, but it's down here somewhere. But my point I was trying to make is, it's a perfect reverse-fronted road cross-access to get along 301 without having to drive on 301.
I'm just asking, does it allow them to get to 56, is what I'm, my only question?
What?
I'm only asking whether the interconnect would allow them to get to State Road 56.
Yes.
Okay.
Because when this one comes in, we'll have them to provide the rest of the interconnect. Yes.
Okay. That answers my question.
So, that's in a nutshell. So, I handed out a couple of conditions, and oh, staff is recommending approval of the MPUD rezoning, but denying their requests from not having to interconnect to the south. So, before, and I handed out some revised conditions, and I just want to be specific, that 14, 15, and new condition number 23 are actual conditions that need to go into the conditions of approval at this time. Condition, findings of fact six, condition 17 and 22 will only be added if the planning commission agrees with the applicant about the interconnect. So, what, right now, we're looking at 14, 15, and new 23.
So, is the applicant in agreement with 14, 15, and new 23?
I believe they are, yes, but Shelley can, yeah, Shelley can come up and address that.
So, the only area of disagreement, what I'm hearing, is six, 17, and 22.
Correct.
You don't agree with changing those so that the interconnection on the court?
I'm sorry, say again?
You don't agree with relieving them from the interconnection requirement?
Right.
Okay.
I'm, I'm-
So, just, just so I'm clear though, on 22, what was struck was the word "and west." Should "and south" have been struck instead?
No, no, because it says if the property, oh, if, property. Yeah, I was looking at that, trying to think of what, what I was trying to say in that condition.
It, it seems to me that if, if you agreed with the applicant, you'd be striking "and south."
But I think, but in the... But it, it comes with the paragraph, east and west of Crystal Springs Road, because they're already providing-
Oh, I see, because on the east side-
They're already providing one here.
Okay, east side of Crystal Springs Road, they are providing one.
So, I struck "west."
Got it, okay, okay, I'm, good, that makes sense, got it. Okay.
So, yes, those are, those will be... Right now, you guys are, are concerned about 14, 15, and new 23.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have for you.
You can go now.
Thank you. I'm glad.
Your time is up. Alright, Shelley, you want to add anything?
I'm gonna try to keep this very short. Shelley Johnson, 7241 Little Road, I have been sworn, I'm the applicant's attorney. We're in agreement with all of the suggested revisions that have been handed out with regards to the interconnect, the suggestion that came from staff and you-
Shelley, Shelley, give me one second.
Sure.
Are you also in agreement with the remaining MPUD conditions, not just the ones that were handed out?
Yes.
So, the only area of disagreement is the interconnect, then?
The interconnect is the only thing we're dealing with, yeah. And I know, and we've kind of gone back and forth in the last 24 hours about the interconnect, and in talking to them, Coralyn, if you read the original write-up, she made a suggestion that we gate it, because obviously their concern is, you know, through traffic coming through the development to try to get to the flea market, and we're fine with that, we'll put the stub out and we'll just gate it. We're good with that.
So, the interconnect would be there, but you would just be able to gate it so that your residents could go out?
Right.
But nobody could go in?
We're not going to have through-traffic coming through, yeah.
Is that acceptable to staff?
Yes, because I think 17... Yes. Because 17 says, "For residential properties, those streets that are required to ensure adequate traffic flow..." Oh, wait, that's, no, that's not it, yes, anyways, yes, the answer's yes.
So, I still think they need a, they still need a variation to gate it though, right?
So, the agreement was, and I think that that's the way I wrote it up, is that if it's commercial, it can be gated. But as soon as they rezone that property to residential and get a future land use change to residential and come in with their own MPUD or their own preliminary development plan, then it's not supposed to be gated.
Okay, Shelley, do you want to... Maybe you should just both stand at the podium.
Yeah.
So, we can resolve this.
Right here, it is in 17. It says, however... It is here. "For residential properties, those streets that are required to ensure adequate traffic flow to and through the land are to remain public and shall not be gated. However, residential to commercial properties can be gated."
Is that, you're okay with that?
We're perfect with that, yep.
So, we don't have a disagreement?
No, we got an agreement, I have to think.
Are you all clear on how you need to revise these conditions to implement what you just said?
Yeah, these, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. You probably need to ask for a comment.
Yeah, okay. So, is there anyone here that's, wants to speak on, on this issue? Okay, please come forward and give us your name and address.
Hello, my name is Robert Valentine at 2645 Lost Lorian Lane, Zephyr Hills, Crystal Springs. I own the 1,300 feet that border that 90-degree corner there. And she was saying that one of the-
You're gonna, need to speak in the microphone, I'm sorry.
One of the roads, south. That's it, that, that last blue one, right there on the right, that just disappeared. That blue road would come down, right there, and it looks like it would then intersect with my private driveway that goes to Springdale. So, my question is, that land, that, or if that arrow continues, that's going through private property, and then it would intersect with my private driveway that goes down to Springdale. So, I was wondering how they would exit those people to my driveway? Or would they be exiting it back out to Crystal Springs with another right-of-way?
So, you're suggesting that we limit it to the arrow up by the main road?
So, you're rather the interconnect be closer to the bottom, the bottom right blue arrow? Right, but the bottom right blue one was one that Coralyn said it's a place they might be able to do one. Okay. She'd do two places, they could do one. Right. Are you saying that you favor the one, you'd rather not be the one that's there?
That's correct.
You'd rather be the other one?
So, that's fine, it's the bottom right one with-
So, I think staff is only requesting they do one of the two, right Coralyn? Not both?
That's correct.
Okay, so...
So, is the staff agreeable to eliminating the, the most further inside one?
That, that was just a visual suggestion, saying they could either interconnect by 301 or provide one there, but that one, the one closer to 301 is clearly the one that is more convenient and more apt to work better.
Really, this is, it's an issue where they show the arrow.
Yeah.
Shelley, are you okay with the showing your arrow closer to 301?
Are you okay with inviting your master plan to show the arrow there? Well, it's actually right at the stub out, it's going to be, you see where the cul-de-sac is, that's the corner.
She wants to put it there.
Yeah.
Okay, so there, the cul-de-sac, there.
Yeah.
So, even though there's, even though there's two parcels, you're only requiring one interconnect? Is that right?
Yes, there's only one interconnect is, is required per abutting properties.
Okay.
Do you want more? We can ask.
Well, we just need to make sure that whoever makes the motion says that they add the arrow where that cul-de-sac is. Okay.
Second question is, because I own 1,300 feet of adjacent property, what sort of fencing will go up and will they affect the fencing that I already have to keep my livestock and horses and my property from getting killed on either 301 or Crystal Springs Road?
Coralyn, do you want to comment on what kind of buffer or fence they have to put along there?
I'm thinking, so if it's residential to AR or AC, I think it's a... I think it's a A, I think it's a type A, which is 10 feet wide with trees. They don't, there's no fence required for a subdivision, it's, if they want one.
So, are you asking for a fence?
Well, what I'm worried about is I have horses that are $60,000 apiece.
If they knock down my fence, what's going to keep my horses from getting killed on 301?
I don't think they can knock down the fence on your property.
No.
That's on your property. If your question is, do they, are they going to knock down your fence, they, that would be trespassing. They're not allowed to go knock down your fence.
It's basically what happens with dozers.
Well, if they come down your property and knock down your fence, that's trespassing, you could call the sheriff. They should not be doing that, they should, I thought you were asking what they were doing on their property, but you're not asking for anything on their property. Okay.
Okay. Alright.
I'm Pete there, I reside at 2642 Crystal Springs Road.
You've been sworn.
I, I got the letter.
Pete? Pete?
Yeah, I've always sworn.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I got the letter, don't really understand it. Well, my property lies and my next-door neighbor, basically, we got like a two-lane highway, two-lane road, and there's plenty of room, there's, there's no traffic. But somebody was trying to say they were trying to expand the road there, so I don't, I don't understand whether, whether they're doing this or not.
Which road are you asking about, sir?
Uh, the route, from what I got from, from the letter, my parcel apparently is involved.
No, but are you talking about Crystal Springs Road?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's where I live.
There is a condition that's been requested that they improve that road from county to county standards from their southern property boundary to their northern property boundary.
Right, so apparently it includes my property, but it's, is-
Well, it would be within, they'd have to improve it within the right-of-way.
Right, so basically there's a two-lane road there? Are they talking about expanding it to another road or another?
No, they wouldn't be widening it, they would be, it's, it's apparently a substandard road, and I don't, I'm not-
Substandard?
Staff could tell me exactly what's substandard about it, but-
Sir, sir, I, this is Coralyn, your property is not involved in this rezoning. You're not part of this rezoning. The only reason you got noticed
Right.
is because you are within 500 feet of the- Is because you are within 500 feet of the project boundary. But nothing's happening to your property.
Oh, so we're not really involved with the expansion of the road or nothing?
No.
Oh, well, that's what I was thinking.
Coralyn, I think his question is whether they are going to be widening that road.
Yeah.
My understanding is that they're just paving it to county standards within the existing right-of-way.
As a two-lane, yes.
And this is gonna keep, keep the same dimensions, same dimensions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh.
Well, they have to be within the existing right-of-way.
Right.
It may be that the pavement could be a little wider, I don't know, but they're not gonna be taking your land.
Okay.
That's the question.
That's what we was wondering, if they were gonna like widen the road or something.
No, it would have to be within the existing right-of-way.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Sure. Anyone else?
Well, good afternoon, oh, evening, gentlemen.
Yeah.
A while, 1:30, uh, my name is Andy Hart, I live at 2455 Crystal Springs Road. Our main concern is the thoroughfare in front of our house, Crystal Springs Road. It's exactly 20 feet wide. Large trucks go down it every day. I wondered if you could reduce the speed limit from 50 to 30? Well, sorry, it says 30, but everybody drives it at 50. How much more traffic? How much more traffic are you gonna be dumping onto this road from those two side-to-side subdivisions? And how are you gonna get them out on Chancy Road, which does not have a signal for a left turn, only a right? You can cross to the left, but you have to wait till traffic clears, go in east on Chancy to get onto it, go in left, go in west. So with a 20-foot road, barely room for two trucks to pass each other. It looks like you're gonna be dumping another 12 to 16, 100, traffic, uh, trips a day on it.
So I think either the applicant or staff are gonna have to address the traffic impacts of this project. I don't know the answer to this question.
I wonder if you could have somebody research that for us? Also, we live within 500 feet and did not get a ladder like everyone else has been getting. So we don't know who those came from.
They come from the county.
Well, the applicant actually sends the notices, so we'll have to, applicant will have to address that as well.
Yeah. Also, I could point out that blue arrow on the east side of the picture, the further stripe, that just goes into woods.
But that wouldn't be there. We discussed, we discussed that's not gonna happen, that blue arrow.
The other one's gonna have to be the one you use, because there's nothing there.
No.
We're not putting the arrow there. That was Coralyn just drawing with a crayon.
It's gone, it's now it's gone.
Now it's gone.
Okay. Is there someone that wants to respond to that question?
Good evening, uh, my name is Mike Razor, on 19046 Bruce B. Downs Boulevard. I have been sworn, I'm the traffic engineer for the applicant. Um, the specific question dealt with traffic impacts on Crystal Springs Road. Um, we provided the timing and phasing study for the applicant. Um, we identified that south of the project, um, an additional 29 peak hour trips are estimated. Um, for the timing and phasing analysis, we looked at the peak hour capacity, and we are well below, uh, the capacity of that road. Currently, we project a background traffic volume of 157 vehicles per hour during the PM peak hour, increasing to 284, uh, within the, the highest impacted segment, which is further to the north along the project boundaries, which is well below the capacity of 987 vehicles per hour. In regard to the comment about the width of the road, several years back, when the original MPUD was done, a substandard road analysis was done at that time, which identified the substandard features of the road. A substandard road analysis was not redone, as the, neither has the Land Development Code changed in regard to that section in any material way, nor have the, uh, any improvements done to that road. So those conditions were carried over. Um, if I am to believe that the road is 20 feet in width, the substandard road condition would increase that to, I believe, 22 feet, 11-foot minimum lane widths, which would improve the road within the project boundaries. If there's any more traffic questions, I'd be happy to answer them, thank you.
I think he asked about the intersection of Crystal Springs and...
We did analyze that as part of the timing and phasing analysis. We identified that with the pro, at, at build-out of the project, it would operate within the county's performance standard pursuant to the Land Development Code.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Pardon me?
I haven't, I've not sworn in. I didn't think I was gonna talk. Okay, my name's Marie Rogers. I live at 1307 Hawthorne Street, Zephyr Hills, which is Crystal Springs. The only thing I want to mention is traffic. I'm not sure where that frontage road is gonna come out, if it's gonna come out on Crystal Springs Road. But, and I don't know when that traffic report was done, but for the past week, week and a half, I've been checking my time. When I go out on Crystal Springs Road to Chancy, Chancy to make a left, it's been averaging three to four minutes at 6 o'clock at night to make a left. This morning at 10:30, it was three minutes. So to make that left at Crystal Springs in Chancy, it's that time of year. What are they gonna do? Because you've got people coming this way, you've got people going that way. So, that was just my point. It's too busy there at Crystal Springs in Chancy during the winter months. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, have you been sworn?
Well, I just put my hand up when she did it before, but I'll do it again.
Yes, I think it was appropriate.
I do. Uh, my name's Roy Raven. I live at 37538 Bimoney, which is Tropical Acres. It's across 301 from this development. We've been there about three years. My main question is, can you now get to Route 39 from, um, Crystal Springs? So I, I don't know if that's the case. If that is the case, conceivably, you could have a lot of cars exiting out to 39 to the convenience store that's there. And then on the, the graphic that you showed, just below Tropical Acres is the prison, and just below the prison is where 56 is coming in. So it was just off the, the map there. I, I don't know how soon 56 at this point, as far as I'm familiar with, is gonna end at 301. I don't know what the timetable is for it to extend, which would be around the bottom of this. But, that's my questions.
Okay. Would you like to respond to that again?
So I, I can partially answer the 56 question. I believe that this, this MPo and the cities are doing a PDNE or route study to determine the route of 56. Is that an accurate statement, Ari? So, but there's no funding at this time to actually build that extension.
I'll check this, yeah, we, um...
Okay.
I don't believe that there's any money allocated to do anything other than study the route.
That's all I, yes, I, I do know that for a fact, that we are...
Shelley?
Um, and I think the other question was, does Crystal Springs Boulevard connect into 39, and it does. It currently does.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I guess that's it? Okay. Any other questions from up here? Chris?
Uh, I think for either, probably Shelley.
Shelley?
I have a question. So I was looking, so it looks like previously the RUC's development was 510 units.
Yes.
From what I saw, I see it's 600 units here.
Yes.
Is 150 single-family attached, is that the maximum or the minimum?
That's the maximum. See, I can answer that question.
Oh, thank you, Coralyn, I should ask you.
That's the maximum, yeah, that's the total.
And so, looking at our capacities, um, this would fall into Chester Taylor Elementary's. Chester Taylor Elementary is that capacity. Stuart Meadows is a little bit under. We're adding some capacity at Zephyr Hills High. You know, I think at this time, we're, you know, we're fine with, even though we'll be a little over, with the impact fees generated from this, I think we'll be, we'll be sufficient, and we can meet, meet the demand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything? Burge? Amy? Mike?
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. Uh, so did I hear a motion? A second?
Don't look at me, I can't make a motion.
I can't either.
Okay, so...
With the amendments to staff recommendations.
Yeah, motion, yeah.
To be clear, does that include moving the arrow to the cul-de-sac? Okay, okay, moving the arrow.
The blue arrow.
The blue arrows, okay, got it.
Right. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So moved.
Thank you, Coralyn. You were on the winning side of the last vote.
Yes, we have. Let's adjourn.
It's a little tough.